And welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, March 26th, 2018. We have another full agenda. First of all, though, for those of you who were here or watching, I want to apologize for the last meeting. We didn't go until about 2:00 in the morning. We will not do that this time. I will hold people to their schedules, even if it means I'm cutting them off. So we're going to try to really keep to this schedule. It has us going until 10:15, but the open session ends at 10:05. So our agenda for this year, of this year, for tonight, is at 7:00 we will be doing community input. At 7:05, there's a request for a one-day liquor license by the library trustees. At 7:10, a request for the sighting of electric vehicle charging station at Town Hall. At 7:30, we will be hearing about two personnel requests, the town clerk's office and Conservation Commission assistant. At 7:50, we will be reviewing the proposed town meeting warrant articles. Specifically, we'll be hearing a presentation from the Recreation Commission on the Spalding Field study request. At 8:00, we're having a discussion of the fiscal year 20 FinCom budget recommendation. Are we going to be doing that? Was that finalized last night?
That was not finalized last night.
It was not?
So Victor won't be coming tonight.
Okay, so we most likely will not be doing that item.
It's a half hour.
Which will kind of mess everything up. So at 8:30, finalizing the town meeting election warrants and ballot questions. At 9:00, discussion regarding personnel requests. At 9:15, discussion re-establishing a cable advisory committee. And at 9:30, assignment of rights, acknowledgement of location and confirmation of easement rights. 9:40, town administrators' report. 9:50, liaison reports. 10:00 minutes. 10:05, executive session, and at 10:15, adjournment. I will be taking these out of order, particularly since we just opened up a half-hour time slot, but I will try to keep the media discussion things on the appropriate schedule. So with that, is there anybody here for public input? Okay, see, nobody. We will move on to the request for one-day liquor license for the library trustees. Can we have that or a package? Is there somebody here from the library?
I...
Priscilla's here.
She didn't have to come.
I can do this.
If you like, she didn't have to come because she's done it two or three times before.
Okay. Priscilla Stevens, 871 Maple Street, Library Trustee.
Hello.
We're requesting a license, obviously, for an art presentation. Not a presentation, it's a reception. And it would be a one-day liquor license.
Okay, on April 5th.
April 5th.
That's a Sunday?
It's a Friday.
Friday, okay. All right. Anybody have any questions?
No, let's see, it's been already signed off by the police chief. I always prefer that it's been approved. And they can't get their insurance until after they get their permission. We have to get their permission so that I can see the type of policy here. So can I make the motion?
Second.
This is...
You're going to read?
Sorry.
I think we're all a little bit worried about going until school.
That's right. We're still punching for our last meeting.
The clock is running.
You making a motion?
Yes, I move the Board of Selectmen grant a one-day wine and malt beverages license pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 138, Section 14, to Gleason Public Library for an event to be held at 22 Bedford Road, Carlisle, Mass. 01741, April 5th, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., subject to the applicant providing a host liquor liability insurance certificate.
And I second that.
You second that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Read aye.
Brown aye.
Huskell a lau aye.
Lewis aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this your row number?
Yeah.
Row number five, yes. Finally, it's a heavy time.
Yeah, Debbie's not here yet.
Can I just get his signature on that? It requires the chair's signature, if it's permitted.
Sir Chair, could you just sign, I guess, there? Need of approval, right? Oh, there she is. Come right up. I'm ready for you.
Well, it's because it's still early.
Yeah, no, speeding up here. Okay, I'm Debbie Batty, from the Energy Task Force Bedford Road. I'm here to formally ask if the Select Board would allow the Energy Task Force to install an electric vehicle charging station in the car park of the Town Hall with a grant from the Green Communities. I think you have one.
Thank you.
And just to update you, from on the plan, we're going to have to move to the place, I said, alternative future location, where that's actually going to be our proposed location now because of, there was a rather large pile of snow sitting on top of some plumbing. I didn't know that, so...
So you're now to the right of the...
So I'm going to go to the alternative future location because there's actually wetlands as well, so I'm sort of trying to avoid any other board I need to go in front of. So it's much easier, I just go to the alternative.
And there's a readily available electricity right now?
We are coming from the transformer here and they can bring it around the building without disturbing... We're trying not to dig up a road because apparently that causes more delay than we really want to go and have.
It's too bad we can't use those 15-minute spots.
Yeah, there's a couple of issues. We ever source, install the wiring, but kind of connectivity, not going to do connecting for free because they're trying to encourage people to have electric vehicle charging stations that they need money. But I think it's a different department that deals with wires that go on the road and there's a bigger delay. So, and the other thing is that we want, if we put it further over here, we can actually have more, they'll have the future, they'll have enough for several more stations if we ever require them, whereas if we go over to the cross the road, we'll be taking away disabled parking spaces and then we get into the whole thing about redesigning this car park and I'm trying not to go there. This has been our nightmare project because this is the third location we've been looking at town for these and we're still working on the other two, but they're going to take so much longer. This is like the one we now believe is the easiest one to install this year with the current grant.
Is this going to be a dual or a single?
Yes, two. They all come as two.
So I have a question. I can see, I couldn't see it in the PDF, but I can see here that it takes credit cards. So this, there's no cost to the town?
There's no cost to the town for electricity and they're also, we will, what they have in Chelmsford Library is that they say that these spots, if somebody parks, if the parking lot's full and those are the only free spots, there's a sign saying, if somebody requires this for charging the vehicle, you'll be asked to move your vehicle. But it doesn't, see, those spots can still be used by non-electric vehicles who are not charging their car, but obviously, it's like if the spot's needed, they're going to have to move. That's a sort of, and I think, we asked Chelmsford Library and they said, I think, if it ever had happened once, they'd be amazed, they couldn't actually recall the time that it happened. But it's just, the reason that the Town Hall hadn't been our first choice is it's a very well-used car park or parking lot. But this is our sort of, as I say, it was our third choice because of technical difficulties and historic, well, actually, it was the trustees' difficulties were the first one.
Could you speak up?
Sorry, sorry.
I actually...
No, and I'm not speaking in front of the mic. It's kind of hard because I'm not...
No mic.
There's no mic.
Oh, there's no mic. Okay. I'll talk louder. So, yeah, so what I'm working with at the moment, just to give a bit of a background, I'm still working on the other two locations and even a fourth location with the Historic District Commission. So we all sort of have got everything in place, so in the future, hopefully, we won't have the same hurdles that we've had this time around.
What are those locations?
One is the library, one is Ferns. That was our second choice and we have to go underneath the road for that. And the third choice is Center Park. That would seem the next logical place.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think Center Park would be a pretty good one. I'd say so it'd be in favor of Ferns though, because it's such short-term there anyway and it's a, it's a commercial business.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, when we hit...
But Center Park is a good compromise today.
Yeah, but with Center Park, we have to get an easement now to get through from bringing the wires under the ground at the road tree because the wires are always on the wrong side of the road. The power's always on the wrong side of the road, so we have to bring...
That's a natural law.
Right.
So now we're in the, it's working with Complete Streets to try and make sure that we can get whatever conduit we need in the right place. And so do we just, you know, do you put two in or do you put one in? And it would seem more logical just to put one in because it's more likely to get power to that side of Bedford Road, I think, is there's more people that need it than...
Yeah, I think Center Park would be a great choice.
So that takes a bit longer because you have to get easements through people's property and things like that. So Center Park's like the longest-term one and then the other two will just keep working.
And so this doesn't charge, cost the town anything?
No.
It's all part of the grant. There's no cost for the electricity.
No, it's charged.
And to see, the parking itself, so it seems to me like there probably needs, you know, I totally understand the signs, but maybe, maybe that's a timed thing, like, you know, between 8:00 and 5:00 or something like that. Parking lot gets really full at night for some of the meetings.
Yes.
And, you know, if somebody were to come and say, oh, I want to, you know, that's the idea, you know, I would, maybe the sign could just be between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00, you may be asked to move if you don't have an electric vehicle, but I can't imagine that, you know, a night like the other night when this room was full, you know, somebody feeling like, oh, I can just park there by asking it to...
Right, right, yeah.
Just the expectation setting thing.
That's going, it's interesting that you should raise that because that's going to be up to you guys because, you know, did decide, because I then have to go back to the Historic District and say, I need this sign and submit the drawings of the sign as well.
No, this would just be for the town lot, not for... Are we in the Historic District?
Yes.
Just well, this, that, this half of the building, right?
No, it's the whole, the whole building and half of the car park.
Yeah, for some reason I thought it was mostly...
The paved part of the park, part of the Historic District.
Yeah, so I think we do want a sign.
Yes, and so I will have to, I don't know whether we can do this under, we have to come to the Select when we agree it or something, but I will have to come back to you with, and get an agreement for a sign.
Well, people driving here from Carlisle probably don't need to recharge their cars.
Yeah, I mean, the times we had expected would be top-ups. It's much more for people who are coming here on business.
Right.
To visit, you know, some meeting at the Town Hall or something. I mean, you might, in that case, you might have somebody who's an external consultant coming and I don't know.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of who's going to use it. I have an electric car, so I am not going to use it because I don't need to top up when I come in. But, but the other thing is...
You might want to when we're here for seven hours.
We're discharging over that time, you know? No, but I'm just thinking, like, I use one in Gloucester because it's 50 miles away, but the thing is that there's things for me to do once. I mean, I don't just sit there in the car. I get to go out, I get to go to a restaurant, whereas here, how many people are really, and believe me, I'm for these, I have an electric car. How many people do we really think are going to use this in this town, this, this parking lot?
Very few.
Lot?
No, I think... What doesn't need it either? Because he can get the, he can get the electricity cheaper at home.
Yes, I think it's just, it's more that it's, at this point, it's a sign that the town is moving in this direction. And as I say, we, all the other spaces, which were much more like, the library was the logical one because people can go and then go into the library or go into Ferns. That's why Ferns became our next choice.
Well, the only reason why you would install something like this and you'd want to locate them in places where there may be employees who...
Well, okay, that's a different matter, yes.
Who are working there. So if there was an employee who were to start working here, or who does work here, who were to get an electric car...
That gives them the option now.
Then he gives the option to charge. And the same thing with the school, and that is another thing that kind of makes even maybe Center Park, but it certainly makes Ferns less, a less desirable location.
In fact, have we considered the school parking lot?
Well, I think...
I'm staying away from what's happening at the school.
And they'll have solar power.
Yeah, you do that.
Again, that's where I found out there was a different timeframe about putting on the wires under the road and apparently, I would much rather you spoke to Bob Clark and to Jonathan about that, you know, whatever, because they know, they've discussed it and it's their, that's their baby, not mine.
So I didn't follow that at all?
Well, there's issues to do with when you put the solar power in and the solar panels won't be actually charging anything. It wouldn't be used for the electric car vehicles.
Right, but the thing is they'll be ripping it up and so that if they are going to lay wires, that would be the time to do it.
Absolutely. There you go, you've got it. And so, but I don't really want to get involved in their project because I've got enough things to do, if you must know, and that's their project. So if you want that in their project, you have to ask for it, put it that way.
Got it. It seems to me like two better locations would be the library and the school than Town Hall.
That's not the proposal, though, so whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well...
Let's move on to the proposal.
Well, I'm stating my opinion.
Yeah.
Right, so...
I don't disagree with you. This is our, it's, you know, the third option for...
But this is the Selectmen saying that this is something we'd like to encourage in the town. We can't do the library and Ferns at the moment. We may have employees who would then be encouraged to get an electric car because now they know they could plug in and, you know, they wouldn't have range anxiety because they know they can plug in at work. And it doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything.
Well, it'll cost, whatever it costs the DPW, they have to do some groundwork, so...
Do they?
It'll be a little bit of...
What I heard was that there is a possibility it could be at the school, we just have to open up the conversation.
You, this one probably couldn't be, this is the grant for 2018.
Okay.
This is the other thing. It's not, and, and the timeframe at the school is different, even though it's happening. If, I really don't know what the project is at the school in enough depth to talk about it, but I think if you want to have electric charging vehicles possibilities there, you should ask them now because it is going to get doubled.
So if we...
I'm being very evasive, but I don't want to commit to something that the other guys can't do.
So if we approve this one here at Town Hall, where's the second one going?
No, we only have one.
So we only have a grant for one?
We have two, the price of one. You have one pole and two.
Oh, I thought there were two of these.
No, we only have one.
So we all have a grant for one?
We only have a grant for one.
One which will charge two cars at the same time.
When does the grant expire?
June, and we have to ask for a little bit of an extension, probably.
I like the ways about curve.
We're really trying...
So there isn't enough time, you don't think, to work on the other locations?
We're working on the other locations because that will be with a different grant.
Yeah, okay, so it'd be a different grant, though. Yeah. I mean, if it's not going to cost the town anything, I guess we might as well just do it, but, yeah, but it's not.
If it doesn't preclude any other...
Yeah, no, it's just, it's a...
Yeah, you don't want to...
I know, I don't...
It's kind of like, it's kind of like that first one you put in to be in the optimal location.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Rather than the default because he can't go anywhere else.
Right, yeah.
And Green Communities would be with that, with that, too, and I have to submit a long reason for why it's not in the first two locations. So, you know, I have to have all the backup correspondence. So, yeah, it's not, you know, but it's better than nothing, what can I say?
It would probably be a...
So I think, I think maybe what we'd want to do if we're going to put in another green, another grant for this is kind of get the location nailed down before we put in for the grant.
Well, that's, I think that's why I've opened up the discussion now with the various different parties and hopefully the library, we've got enough time to get them on board, too.
Okay.
Without them feeling that we're giving them something they don't want.
So can I ask one last question? I see you have the Historic District boundary marked.
Yes.
What if we put it beyond the boundary so we don't have to worry about, you know...
Signs.
It doesn't, yeah?
My initial, my initial...
I used to be the chair of it.
Recently?
I think that puts it even more...
Okay, I'm just...
Yeah.
I'm getting very friendly with people from the HDC, it's, you know, they're getting used to me being there every month. Bringing coffee now, you know?
Is there a motion to approve the installation of the electric vehicle charging station at Town Hall as identified in tonight's handout, the alternative future location?
Some have moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Oh, a read aye.
Kissing or no?
Brown aye?
If I may explain, I just think it's, it's something that nobody's going to use but somebody else is paying for and we can say, everything's up to date in Kansas City. So, you know, it's, I just don't think it's going to be used.
You never know. My husband might come if I'm plugged in.
My wife might do it?
Yeah.
Lewis aye.
Okay, motion passes. And if it's outside Historic District, it's down in the mud.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
Absolutely not.
You really want to do that?
Well, maybe so you can see us.
Well, we don't want it, then, no, put them back.
Tim, do you want to jump into Town Administrator's Report?
Sure. I have that here somewhere. Okay, the first item is that we need, the board needs to name a new town representative, the Minuteman Neshoba Health Group. Our finance director, former finance director, Carrie Colburn Dion was the representative, so I'd ask the board this evening to name our new finance director, Bonnie Fleck, as the town's representative to the Minuteman Neshoba Health Group.
So I move that the board vote to name Finance Director Bonnie Fleck as Carlisle's new representative to the Neshoba, the Minuteman Neshoba Health Group.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, Carrie, I totally forgot about you over on the computer while we're having the last discussion, so I'm going to start with you.
I wish I was asleep, don't worry. Kissinger aye?
Read aye.
Brown aye?
Huskell a lau aye.
Lewis aye.
Okay, very good. Second item, we've attached the report, you'll see an amended, possible amended charge for the Facilities Committee to provide for additional appointments, the town and school facilities manager as voting members. That might, Mr. Chairman, might require an extended discussion, so maybe we could pass over that for now or...
Okay.
I can move pretty quickly through some of the rest of this. We have a request from the Conservation Commission to appoint Alex Para as a member to fill a vacancy on the Conservation Commission. Mr. Para is a former board member, former Conservation Commission member, and the commission's very happy that he's willing to serve again. And I think we've attached his request to be appointed and the...
And we have all his documents and the request from the Conscom.
I move we appoint Mr. Para to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do I need to put a term in?
Yeah, term to expire, it would be June...
June 30.
June 30th?
Term to expire, June 30th of this year, 2019? Is this just an expended term?
Yeah, he's filling Steve Smith's role, right?
Yeah, so we'll just come right back around because he was going to, well, he was going to expire in June 30th, 2020, but, so do we, do we do it until 2020?
It should go until 2020, yeah.
Okay.
So June 30th.
Steve Smith, correct. He's filling a slot that expires from 2020.
Right.
2020.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Kissinger aye?
Read aye.
Brown aye?
Huskell a lau aye.
Lewis aye.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item, it's also, I'm once again for the board to nominate animal inspectors to the Department of Agricultural Resources. Deborah Toar and Larry Sorley are again willing to serve the town in that capacity, so we ask that you move to nominate them once again. Get a suggestive motion.
And when does this term expire?
We do this annually, so it's April to April, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to add that in there, whoever's doing it.
2020. Okay, I move that Deborah Toar and Lawrence Sorley be nominated for the position of animal inspector and their names be submitted to the Department of Agricultural Resources for confirmation, terms to expire, April 2020.
Second.
Okay, I just have a quick question before we get to the vote. Why is this not the same as all of our other appointments and nominations that we do kind of post? Is this just off-cycle a little bit?
I think, I think because it falls under Chapter 129 of the general laws and for some reason it's April, April, April.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Kissinger aye?
Read aye.
Brown aye?
Huskell a lau aye.
Lewis aye.
Okay.
Okay. All right, item number five, there's an informational meeting here next Tuesday evening on the municipal solar project and Jonathan just stopped by, so maybe with your permission, Mr. Chairman, he could give us a brief commercial for that informational meeting next week?
Would you like to?
I can.
Okay.
Depending on this part of the tour. So, yes, we're planning on having an informational session.
Hold on, would you mind just, let's move that mic up to the podium and then people can, I just want to make sure people are facing that way. We had some problems with people being able to hear last time.
Is that good?
Yeah.
So, yes, we're holding an informational session. We plan to cover the topics of the bylaw update, the look and feel of the canopies, right, which you guys have seen a couple weeks ago. The company, Amaresco, that's going to be putting them in, if everything passes, will be there to answer questions. We're also going to be covering the details of the financials. I know you guys had some questions on that, so we're going to try to go through that in, you know, enough detail to explain to people how this is a positive for the town from a financial standpoint in addition to the climate change impacts. And so, yeah, so that's planned for next week, Thursday, I believe, and we're trying to get the word out, I believe.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. All right, that's good, because if we show it up two days late...
Yeah, Thursday. Where is it?
So, and, and while I have the floor, just want to make sure you guys got the information about the financials that, you know, we're in Block 1, Block 2 and whatnot, that you had asked about last time. And we did find some wording that will eliminate the Hill and Spalding Field, which you guys had also asked for. So I believe we covered the things that you guys asked for two sessions ago.
Okay.
So, but if you have any other things, I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to come back to the Facilities Committee. Right now, we will go ahead and jump to the two requests. The first one is additional hours for an Assistant Town Clerk for $5,839. Hello?
You wanna cheer Mary?
Oh, I can, it's all right.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good evening. So what you have in front of you is what I already presented to the FinCom and has been approved by Personnel Board. So basically, right now Peggy, my assistant, is working four days a week, and I'm requesting the additional hours so that on Monday she would be there as well. I'm doing that because I believe that she can be trained more efficiently. You will have more added benefit to the position because, you know, the department will be covered at all times when we're open.
Is a little green light on? Usually runs up when the little green light's out.
So, uh, so the change in title was approved, you're saying, by the committee?
So were the hours, yes.
Okay, and what was the feedback from FinCom?
FinCom asked me to go through the process, which was naturally through, to go to Personnel and then to come to you. And then, I guess ultimately, it comes back to them for the monetary reasons.
Okay. And did the change in title change their grade or anything?
It did not.
Okay.
Was this already in your budget and in the budget guideline that the FinCom has given you for this year?
I did turn it in at the beginning, yes.
So?
They have seen it, yes.
I understand they've seen it, but when they give you a budget guideline?
I don't believe it is within the guideline.
Yeah, wasn't everybody hopeful?
Yeah, this is, this isn't in the numbers that we've seen, because remember, this was, this is one of those things that still needed to be addressed, both, both of the ones that we're seeing here.
Okay, so I guess.
It's been kind of a time thing, because Personnel couldn't meet and I got bumped off of your agenda a couple of times, you know, because everything's so busy at this time of year.
Yeah.
I think it was a snowstorm, right?
One snowstorm, yeah. One really long agenda.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because if it's in the budget, then there's no financial consequence to this in a way, because it's already in the budget. If FinCom were to say, you know, that's it, we really can't expand the budget anymore, or they don't recommend that we expand, I mean, how do we make this decision?
Where, I think partly we had hoped that FinCom was gonna be meeting and voting on the budget last night, right?
Right, but they're not gonna be able to do that until next Monday.
So we would know where FinCom sat, but I think that what we have to know is, you know, we sat down with them last, two weeks ago, last two weeks ago, and went through the budget, and we know what the expected budget increase is without the warrant articles or the outstanding items. So this would add to that number that we saw.
Yeah, okay, but I also know that, I was there last night, and that, you know, they're really not happy with the process, in a way. Anyway, I've just, it's, it's just been very difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fair to say a couple of things, right? One is, this is way late.
Yes.
For our assigned timeline, but also, it's not like they didn't start early, it's things happened along the way that got it punted. I'm not saying that that's a reason why we should say, okay.
Yeah.
I think everybody tried to do the right thing, I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean to say that means that it's, that we should spend the money. But, but, you know, I think that the delay was for, for legitimate reasons.
The discussion about the Personnel.
Yes.
Policy, and one of the things I've marked in there is that just because we might have sent it to Personnel, even if Personnel approves it, it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna get funded, even if we get all these approvals. And so I guess my question to you, is there any money in your budget anywhere else that you could find this money?
Well, one of the things that I had proposed is because the dog licenses had gone up, we're actually making five extra dollars per dog license across the year. It's gonna bring about 3,000 extra dollars into the budget, so that's part of it right there. I could try and move some of my election funds, I don't recommend it for 2020, cause that is gonna be a crazy election year. So, other than that, we might be able to move some things around.
So I'm just trying to see if departments can prioritize their asks, and this is kind of, that's a good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I know it's difficult, I know money doesn't just grow on trees, but I just think it's so important that the Town Clerk's office be staffed when we're open. And the legitimacy of the ask is that you're gonna have access to our office every time that we're here.
Yeah, so this would actually add an extra day.
Right, I mean, I'm here.
Right, you're right, but you're not.
There's always the chance that I'm on vacation, or, you know, sick, or whatever. I know, what the heck's that? So I, I believe strongly that it's very important to have the office staffed at all times.
Well, I think Charlene's come every year, right? I don't know if she came before I was on, but I, I, you know, this is my third year and I've seen this every year, so.
So, but I guess, so what we're being asked, though, is for 5,839, what might that number be?
Well, it, the, the part about the dog licenses, it's kind of like fluid math. So we are making more, but, you know, I don't know if you can count that towards it, cause it's a different line item, so that's a, that's one of those kind of.
Is it earmarked for anything? I mean, is it, the, the dog?
Does it just go into the general fund?
It just goes into the general fund, so I don't know if, what the.
And if everybody in town just actually paid their dog license.
Exactly, we'd be, we'd be good, yeah.
Don't register their dogs.
I keep meaning to get in.
You got till April 1st.
You can do it online?
There's my community service advisor.
You can do it online, right?
Yes, you can.
You can do it right now, using the town's wifi.
Yeah, you could.
All right, so we're about ready to also hear about another one, that's $10,000. So currently, if there is a day when you're on vacation and you're sick, and that's the day when Peggy's there, what happens, the office just closes?
The office would have to be closed, because I'm the one that has to post agendas and minutes, and, you know, we offer other services as well. But that would, I would think, be a priority, you know? You don't wanna tell a board that they can't post just because no one's there to do it.
There have been times, I know, I needed a notary public, and there was nobody in the Town Hall, I had to go to Rollins Insurance to get a notary signed.
So I guess I'd like to know, you know, I guess, before I said yes or no to this, I'd like to know, what can we get that number to? Is there a way it can be absorbed somehow? How could we find that out, Tim?
I think we'd have to talk with the finance people on that and see what, you know, where, where it might fit into things. I think, I'm, I'm not sure where we'd find it right now, cause as you say, the fees go into the general fund, so it's not, those funds aren't directly available to be used for Personnel. We could, but we can, we can find that out, and as I said, the Finance Committee's not gonna finalize the budget until next week. So, you know, there's an opportunity to, you know, if the board is so inclined to, to make that appeal to them. And one other thing, I was gonna point out, the change in title is important, because now as an Assistant Town Clerk, you know, the Assistant can, can stand in the shoes of the clerk when she's not there.
Right.
She can do more, you know, official acts than someone who's just an Assistant too. The Town Clerk could not do it, so that, you know, I applaud Mary for making that simple change, but.
Because it doesn't change the salary.
No, no, it doesn't, but, yeah.
The hours that are changing salary, not the title, so.
Needed change.
You get a mini-me on Mondays, so.
Well, I think either way to do it would be to reduce the hours but have five days, reduce hours for five days.
I don't know.
That's another way of scanning the cap, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that's been considered.
I don't think so yet, I would hesitate to say that was a good idea, because I think my department is probably one of the busiest in Town Hall.
I would say so, too.
And I think as a first point of contact information, it's, it's always busy, even after 3:00, you know, so.
I only bring it up because some employees would like to have that kind of flexibility to.
That's correct.
Have a shorter day or more time off in the morning or afternoon kind of thing, so.
Good point.
Yeah, so I mean, ultimately, I guess, yeah, if we can find it somewhere.
Maybe this isn't.
If you get a better estimate of.
This isn't going to FinCom and saying, hey, increase the budget. You know, it's, it's where, you know, are there other things that the, you know, the Town Clerk's office is doing, like the?
Right.
You know, it's not like, oh, well, there's extra money from the building inspector, right? It's, are there other things of the services that the Clerk's office is providing where we might be able to offset this in some way?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I don't want, don't wanna put Bonnie on the spot, but I think that's something I wanna talk with Priscilla and Bonnie about, between now and next, next week.
Yeah, and even if it's an estimate for a portion of it, you know, just, because, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be hard to guesstimate, but, well, I guess you can kind of ballpark, right? Cause you have the history of what the licenses cost, and, or how many people registered their dogs, but, yeah.
Well.
So she's, she's at 32 hours right now?
Um, she's at 30, 24, and I'd like her to be 30, yes.
So it's not eight hours a day?
No.
What would the hours be?
Nine to three.
Nine to three?
Yeah, so pretty much a core, sort of hours.
Any other questions? Carrie?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Additional hours and a great change for Conservation Commission Assistant. Hello? I just wanna make sure that I ask you, because you're facing this way, just want you to speak up so that people behind you can hear. We had a lot of problems last week, I think because of the, or two weeks ago, I think because of the new hire seats, so.
Next to the other ones, I don't think they are hired, they just feel hired, I don't know.
My name is Angie Verge, Chair of Conservation Commission.
Sylvia Willard, Conservation Administrator, and Dan Routs from the Conservation Commission as well, joining us tonight.
We are here, again, we met with you about a month ago, to discuss two Personnel topics that we have in our Conservation Office currently. Last time we met, unfortunately, only one of those topics made it to the agenda, so we were not able to talk about the hour increase. So we're gonna be, I, I think that's what I'd like to talk about first. And I understand you've had some long meetings, so we'll try to keep this as brief as possible. So I have our budget guideline from FinCom, which indicates that there is a reserve of 10,000, our request, sorry, that's a difference, that is pending the approval by the Board of Selectmen. The hours that we are requesting for our Administrative Assistant, who currently works 30 hours per week, and we are asking for that to be increased to 35 hours. This is something that was approved by the Personnel Board two years ago, three years ago?
2000, January 2017, and then.
And we repeatedly come back asking for funding for this, and we're back again, so this is.
I was there, when I was on Congress, I was on that side of the table asking for it.
And then you came over here.
And three hours are paid from our wetland fee account that comes from the state's fees.
So initially, our requests to FinCom for these hours were to fund all 35 hours. And the reason is that we have an Intents Account that is funded by wetland fees, that come in through the Town Permit Fees. And that's a very variable, variable fund, we never know. When we were reviewing all of our funds last year, it turned out we weren't gonna have enough money to cover the three hours per week, for next, for next year. And then we had the Woodward Village filing just come in, so.
Yay.
It's a blessing and a curse, it's great.
A little bit of work for you, Gush.
And it's a lot more hours, it's gonna be a significant, and we opened the hearing on Thursday.
11,000 yards of fill.
So it's gonna require a lot of site visits, it's gonna require a lot of Sylvia being out of the office, on-site visits and pre-construction meetings and such, which again, is another reason why we need additional hours to make sure that we have the office covered for everything else that goes on in conservation. Again, this has been approved by the Personnel Board, we went back again in January after going to, and again, I can't remember which side of the, we're like a hockey puck, going around to various boards. It was recommended we go, FinCom wanted us to go back to Personnel Board to get a continued recommendation, and they agreed still. And actually, you know, we're surprised we weren't asking for more, especially with the Dear Committee hours that were put on our, our office as well. So we're still here for the 35 hours. So I think my question is, is this 10,000 still allocated for us? I mean, how does that work?
I don't know what you have in your hand there.
Okay, I'm sorry, so our Conscom budget guideline from FinCom?
Yes, you may.
Guideline, budget request, so it's not allocated yet.
Yeah, no, this is not in your budget.
So is the, now that the Woodward filing came in, are the three hours gonna go back?
Yes.
So that'll come off of the 10, 766?
We now have the money for the, the three hours.
So what is that?
Depending, and it doesn't matter which grade you're at, grade 5, grade 6.
Yeah, so what's the dollar mark for that, did you calculate it?
So we have been swirling in numbers all day.
So wait a minute, so it's, how many hours increases? It's five hours, so it's a five-hour increase? Right?
Five-hour increase.
Okay, so we're looking at, it would be less than half, right, so it would be 60% or 40%? If you're going three hours, right? Sorry, my second grade math fails at this time of time.
Sorry, so I was looking at that, are you saying this 10,700 includes the three hours that was coming out of the other account?
Yeah, right, so the three's gonna come back out.
Back that out, because we can now cover that.
Oh, you can now?
You can now, yes, yes.
So I'm just gonna do this.
I was working with Priscilla today, and she said she reported last Monday that we couldn't.
So 40% is what?
But we now can.
Four, carry the two, six.
And so how much is that for three hours?
Thirty, carry the six.
Come to of the 10,000?
So it's 43. Six and change will come out, yeah, so it's like 4,300.
4,300 is the three hours, and then the six.
No, the 4, 430640 would be the two hours, cause it's five hours, right, three come out.
Right, 4,4200 is what we have slated to cover.
Okay, so you're asking then for 6466?
Yes.
No, it's the, leaving four, yeah, 4,300, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're asking for 4,200.
4,300640.
So we have the other.
They're asking for seven, approximately, approximately 7,000.
Seven, oh, okay.
But I thought that we were, we were adding five hours, right?
Five hours?
Or is there, is it eight hours? It's eight hours, three of which were paid.
General Fund now has.
27.
27, you add five and you'll get.
32.
32, and we can fund three more.
To make the 35.
Oh, 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 oh.
Double counting.
Okay, say that again, the General Fund.
Currently funds 27 hours.
Well, your budget, in other words, currently funds 27 hours. You can, you have three hours in the Intents, so that makes 30.
Right.
And you are now asking for an additional five.
So the full 10, 766? No? Oh, okay, all right.
7,000 something.
Yeah, so it'll be, yeah, so it'll be.
Right, about.
It's too late for math.
It is.
I mean, I, I came up with 47.
Roughly 7,000.
And do we know what percent change that means on your budget? What percent increase is that on your total budget? I mean, I need to know a number, I need to know what the total budget is and what that number is.
672875.
Did the grade change impact the budget?
So this is our second. So that was, so the first thing was the hours, and I know that that's something that we have just been working on for years. Then we talked about the grade change, and we figured why not get all of our Personnel requests in, done. So we did come to you, you said, go ahead, go to Personnel Board, but we're curious what the budget differential will be between the grade 5 and the grade 6. We did go to the Personnel Board, and I don't know if anyone's ever sat through that process of re-grading a job description, but it is pretty impressive. The matrix that they use and the scoring techniques, and we were there for about. The matrix that they use and the scoring techniques, and we were there for about an hour.
Lots of questions.
It is, it's not subjective, it is very, I was impressed. So they did ultimately determine that with the added responsibilities we need in the office, that it was a grade six. So we came, I came up with four scenarios, and these are numbers from Priscilla today, so I'm hoping I got them right. I'm not an economist, I work with plants.
Transferred through me, from Priscilla through me to her.
And so I...
Worked doctor, didn't it, anyway? Where they passed through your end.
So the four scenarios are, nothing changes, obviously, there's no change in budget. If we did just the grade six increase, and this is considering that we are still covering three hours a week out of our intense account.
Including the increase.
So that, no, it would be just thirty hours.
The grade six, we're just talking about thirty hours, just a grade six increase, the differential would be two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
Two thousand two seventy-two.
My point was that the hours that you're covering out of your own would still, would be covered at the new grade.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so going from forty-two hundred a week, we would be covering forty-four, thirty-six. Right, so we would, yeah.
All right.
The grade change would...
We can cover the grade change, extra three hours, the three hours from our intense now, not last week, but now.
So then the third scenario is we only increase the hours and we don't touch the grade. And that would be thirty-five hours. We would still continue to fund three out of our intense account, asking general fund to fund thirty-two hours, and that difference would be forty-seven hundred. But, but Priscilla came up with a different number, so...
I think we need to check the numbers.
We, I think we need to double-check.
Priscilla was probably right, though.
Right, right. I know, but I, okay. And hers was in, sorry, these numbers here. So the difference she's saying is seven thousand from one wage to the next, but I don't know if she's considering any of those intense account numbers.
Yeah, she is, yeah. They were the intense numbers.
Well, that would, so it's seven thousand from one wage to the next, including the additional hours?
That would be...
Because that would make sense, because it adds up.
Adding five hours.
She's saying, yeah, to fund five additional hours is seven thousand dollars.
Sixty-seven, twenty-eight.
At the current grade, you're right.
Oh, the current grade.
Right. It's about seventy-four hundred at the new grade.
And then the fourth scenario is both the grade six increase and the thirty-five hour per week increase would cost ninety-four hundred dollars, ninety-four sixteen.
Wow. So how come that is so much, so close to the ten seven sixty-six, which I thought was for the five hours and the grade increase?
It's not, it's only for the five hours.
It was only for the five hours, but not including the three hours we were supplementing.
That's where I missed, that's what I missed, okay. Well, what would you rather have, the five hours or the grade increase?
As soon as we can do either.
Well, I'm just saying, but I'm just asking them what they would rather, I mean, if you had to have, if we couldn't do both of them, what would you rather have?
I, you, you work in the office.
You're the boss.
I say the hours. I mean, I say the hours. I mean, I look at what's coming onto our plate, and the fact that, you know, Sylvia could do so much more delegating to her assistants if she had the time, and we just don't have the time.
Does this represent a change in what the person is doing? Or is this job description representing what they're currently doing now?
The job description is what she's currently doing. The one thing we did add is more site visits, because we do need one more person to go out, more site visits. We need someone to be able to go out and do some lower level, you know, checking consultation barriers and such, and just verifying things, while Sylvia is, Sylvia is out doing a little more robust site work, site meetings.
Wouldn't be a lot of site visits, but it's, because we need someone in the office.
Right.
But there are times when I'm off somewhere and something comes up and needs to go out. I've taken on two or three site visits over the last few years, but not a lot, and this was a discussion we had with Personnel as well.
Right, so I guess what I'm wondering is, in, in looking at this, I see that, I see a lot of red line that, that appears to be making it a higher-level job, and added things that clearly weren't there in previous years. But I'm wondering, does this, is this representing a change in grade based upon what they're doing now, and the job description was wrong? Or is it representing a change in grade in a kind of promotion-type thing that we want to do?
I would say eighty-twenty. Eighty percent what she's currently doing, twenty percent what we need her to do additionally.
And what, and I guess, is that twenty percent what pushes it over into the next grade, or?
That's really the Personnel.
Right. Personnel kind of went through their various categories of, you know, whatever they do.
Based upon the new job description.
Right. Which in a lot of cases is the current, what she's currently doing. And one reason we went to Personnel in the first place is, someone's doing this work, and they really should be compensated for the amount of work that they're doing.
Exactly, and that's, that's my point. It could be that we don't have a choice of, do you want more hours, or do you want the new grade?
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, because a lot of the changes are things that increased responsibility that Mary took out over the years, and she just grew into this, taking some of the burden.
Right, but there is a lot of red line in here, and I just don't know the timing.
No, exactly, exactly.
Like, are these things that, you know, is she still working under the old job description, and, and that still is valid? In which case then we kind of do have the choice?
Yeah, I mean, I know part of it was when I was on CONSCOM, the idea was to get more off of your plate and put more on Mary's, and I think that's, seems to be what happened, right?
But she is taking on more responsibility.
Yeah.
I know you, you first mentioned this to her about three years ago, so...
Yeah, because, well, part of it, too, is, you know, I mean, because you work an obscene number of hours, and, you know, we really need to think about your mental well-being. But, but also, too, you know, it's nice to have two people in the office that can, you know, share some of the burden. And, you know, I mean, I think it's, I think it's good to see that, you know, because part of it was when I suggested, you know, Mary hadn't really done some of it yet, but it seems like over the years she's actually, you know, picked up and run with some of this. So she's, so she's fully capable of doing a lot of this, that's...
I think the, the big thing that really hit the summer was, was with the deer, which took an obscene amount of her time, and, you know, soon that'll be continuing.
All right, so I think, you heard what we just said to...
I, I just want to also say that, was it three years ago that we had the, the, when did we have, when did the Personnel Board have the kind of the grade over...
That was implemented in twenty sixteen, I believe, yeah.
But it was performed like five years before that.
A couple of years, yeah. Twenty fourteen study, yeah.
Okay, well, I think what we really need is another town, or a regular town-wide rooming of those things, that, because this is just three years after the last one was implemented, and it kind of catches, it's, it's higgledy-piggledy, which bothers me. It was longer ago than three years, though, that the, the grade change...
Yeah, I think it only got implemented three years ago.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry. Well, okay, but the thing is that, you know, and then one gets it, so then the other...
Yeah, it should be more of an ongoing...
It needs to be an ongoing thing, and we're going to have to set some policy at a certain point about how often this gets done, and then, you know, and it is true also that in a lot of organizations, that people do grow in their jobs, they do learn stuff, and they don't necessarily get a promotion, and they don't necess, you know, they might get some little raise or, you know, so I'm, I'm way more in favor, frankly, of giving the hours, if they need the hours, than of kind of growing that job necessarily at this point, until we have another town-wide review. Would that take a couple of years? I mean, that costs...
Yeah, I don't know exactly when, you know, when that would be on the agenda. So, so the only other thing is, it's, you know, we got the Woodward filing this year, right? So you were able to eat the three hours this year. Got to hope for another big filing next year. I mean, it seems to kind of be the thing, is every year we seem to get something, you know, or, because that, that'll be back next year, the three hours will be, you know, if they don't get something to cover it. This is one of the reasons I hate funding out of intense accounts, because you never know. So that's just something to consider, you know, that those three hours will probably be back next year or the year after, you know, unless there's something bigger...
Of course, it also means that they'll have the three hours they need to spend on that particular project, because that brings work with it.
Right, well, that's just it, yeah, yeah.
If they don't have the project, then they don't need to do the work either, by the same token, you could argue.
Yeah, right, but, but, you know, in a couple of years, we're not going to cut the hours, right? Or would we? I mean, we don't, I don't think we cut hours.
I think an example of the kind of work it is, is I've probably been on the site now since December, probably about eight times, and, and we're just getting the filing. That was just, that was just for the wells. Just for the, just for this little tiny piece that's the wells.
It's so hard.
Yeah. It's been long.
But where's that, do you have that? Is that going around the sheet?
The chart?
Yeah, the chart.
She did that.
Yeah, I, my numbers aren't, didn't add up right, though, so...
Well...
But, no, that's why I didn't photocopy it and distribute it, because I'm like, I don't think, something's not right. And again, I do trust Priscilla's numbers.
She, she went through them again with me today, and they added up to what, we started with an email that...
And this was just making my head spin, so I had to put it in spreadsheet form, and...
She had sent Tim an email with it, and then I sat down with her, and she went down through it again, and it came out the same way, so...
Yeah, so some of the figures being, are a little different than what, what Priscilla gave me, so, you know, frankly, I'd like to discuss it with her again.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that's...
Yeah, so can we get firm numbers from Priscilla?
Mm-hmm.
Because we have another week.
Yeah, which is, well, almost a week. Well, FinCom would really like to have their, for their budget.
Well, they're going to get them.
Yeah, they'll, right, yeah.
And then they're going to vote in favor or not in favor.
Right.
And then we would do our thing.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, let's review the proposed, let's see, Spalding Field Study.
Drew McMorrow is going to present that, but he, he thought he wouldn't get here till about eight-thirty today.
Oh.
So he, he asked if he could go a little bit later, if we can move something.
All right, woo-woo, okay, so...
And Victor's not coming, so...
And Victor's not coming, and, all right, let's talk about the policy regarding personnel requests, and then we'll do the facility, actually, yeah, let's do the policy first. So I, so we, we saw this last meeting. Some may remember that we did, and you'll note that the one that was in the packet was fairly substantially edited. That was because of me. And so I just want to kind of lay out, because I couldn't do it ahead of time via email, I just wanted to lay out what my thought was on this. So the policy, the policy for personnel requests that we reviewed last time was written as kind of the process that the Personnel Committee would, the Personnel Board would follow in dealing with personnel requests. And what I thought what we really needed was kind of a policy on how people request. And so I pulled it into kind of like a, a town policy on how you request either additional hours or additional, or grade changes. And I think in general, you know, the, you know, there, there are timelines in here, most of it, I kept the same as what we saw last time. There was, there was something in the original one that, that said that if it was, if there was a financial aspect to the request, I took that out and just said, you know, if there's a financial aspect, or, you know, for the current or any future years, you know, meaning that just, just because you have the money now doesn't mean you can go ahead and do it. If it's going to impact next year as well, you, you know, you can't do it. So basically saying, any grade change, any increase in hours, any of that needs to go through this process.
Is that on this one?
Yeah, that's, I haven't even gotten out of the first paragraph yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, and then in the fourth paragraph there, you know, that's, that's just saying that, you know, that basically everything goes to Tim, the Personnel Administrator. He's going to make sure that all the information is there that's required, and then, once he feels that everything is set, he, he will send the request to the Board of Selectmen. And that, you know, I added that, you know, whoever's requesting is encouraged to attend that meeting, so that we have somebody to ask questions of. And then, once...
So, excuse me.
Yeah.
So given that Tim has two weeks and we have two weeks, that now takes us to October first at paragraph four.
Yeah, by the way...
Yeah, so we might have to adjust...
Vanessa had said August fifteenth would be...
Yeah, let's, let's deal with the timeline later. Let's just kind of meet it, go through the meat of it, then we can make the timeline work. So then, you know, the Board of Selectmen would give a preliminary approval, which basically is not saying that the position is going to be funded, it's just saying, yeah, it makes sense for everybody to spend their time on this. And just saying that the Personnel Administrator will forward that on within fifteen days of the submittal to the Board of Selectmen. So actually...
Personnel Board.
Forward it on to the Personnel Board at fifteen days before, of the Board of Selectmen receiving it, or Tim, Tim seeing it. So I guess I'm at thirty days there, unless I missed something. It's, they get it, within fifteen days of Tim making sure everything's there, we're reviewing it. And then the Personnel Board will put it on their next agenda, or, you know, will put it on their, their agenda. And this is just kind of a catch-all in here that I think Tim had put in there, just saying that if, if the Personnel doesn't take any action, we don't want these things hanging out there. If they take, take no action within thirty days, the, whoever's requesting should just assume it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
Rather than just having it linger.
I really don't like that. What if they just couldn't meet? Why, why, that's kind of, or, what if they just decide not to meet because they don't...
That's fine, it was in, it was in the original one, so I left it in there. And then...
Can they decide to, or decide not to meet? Does that come out, right?
Well, they cannot get a quorum.
Yeah, if they don't have a quorum, but I mean, if there's something on their agenda, aren't they, isn't true? You know, if we direct them, do they have something?
Let me just go through this.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, and then in the last paragraph, it's just saying that, you know, Personnel Board approves it, it goes to the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. So basically, FinCom has to approve it. Actually, I'm not sure why it says, let's see.
Priscilla, I think she'll say, if the request is approved, not when.
And then, then basically at the bottom of this is just saying, you know, just being very clear that in the end, the Personnel Board are the ones that do the approval. I mean, the, the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I wanted, actually, I wanted to add that in a couple of places. After you have the appointing authorities encouraged to attend this meeting, I wanted to put, approval at this stage does not ensure anything but review by, by the Personnel to put, approval at this stage does not ensure anything but review by, by the Personnel Board.
Yep.
That, that was one. And then, not, instead of when the request is approved, to be if the request is approved. And then after that first sentence, by the, if it's approved by the Personnel Board, be referred to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. An approval by Personnel Board does not guarantee FinCom funding. Funds may be, need to be achieved by reprioritizing individual budget lines within the department's overall budget amount. I'd like that clear at the beginning.
Yeah, I'm sorry, where did you put that last part?
Right, after this sentence, the Board of the Selectmen, and then before, are requests approved by the Personnel Board that have a financial impact or subject...
Okay, can I have that?
Yeah.
Would I refer simultaneously?
Sorry?
If the request is approved by the Personnel Board, the recommendation would be referred to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen simultaneously?
It should be just... It should just be the Selectmen.
It's just the Selectmen.
I was struggling with that when I was reading that one paragraph. I think that I neglected to cut out a section.
The, the major thing I would like to do is to ensure that this is a true priority in the department, and that they, you know, would be willing to give something else up if they had to.
Yeah.
And not just that, the other department got it, you know, or whatever. Because this, and, and also, as part of this, these personnel requests, may, I'm not sure if this is where we would put that, and every five years or every three years, we will have a, you know, a review of the other ones, so that it doesn't cost us a lot of money. Because if you do it more often, I think it'll be less expensive.
Right, it would have been about 15 years between studies last time, and that's why it was...
And then it's major, you know?
Right.
But if you do it regularly...
Every five years, and update.
Then we should probably be avoiding these requests, because it will have already been done, and we'll be able to plan for it, and, you know, I really don't like what's been unfolding.
So, okay, so I had forgotten that Vanessa had said August 15th. I had cut it from, from the original saying September 15th, I'd cut it to September 1st. But I can make the change and make it August 15th. Obviously, we're going to want to send this to FinCom and Personnel Board.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you want to do with that, my suggestions.
And, so just so everybody knows, in the fourth paragraph, the last sentence, the Appointing Authority is encouraged, encouraged to attend the meeting. And then, just to repeat what Kate said, she wants to add in at the end of that, approval at this stage does not ensure anything but review by the Personnel Board.
They don't want them to, you know, get their hopes up.
Right. Looking at, at the schedule and the timing, the way it's, it's written, starting with September 1, it takes us basically to November 15th with no hitches. So, you know, with everybody, everything being scheduled in an optimal way.
Yeah, and, and I guess, and I think that...
So, does that mean, November 15th, does that get it, get it done, or?
We'd like to have it done before FinCom starts making their budget guidelines, because, so that we're not...
October would be better.
So, I mean, these numbers are still hanging out there, they can't even finalize their budget today. So, I think that's not...
It started in August, October might be realistic, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if, I mean, if, if we said August 1st...
Yeah, we can even say August 1st.
Then, two weeks later, it would mean, we would have to take action within two weeks.
So, it's end of August.
So by August 15th, no, if it's August...
First, okay, August 15th.
That would be August 15th, and then the Personnel Board has 30 days. That would be September 15th.
And we really have to take this pocket veto out about their just not acting.
Yeah.
I think they need to act or not.
Yeah.
You know? You can't just have it hanging out there and just...
Yeah, because that would just add to the confusion. I mean, part of this policy is to remove the confusion, right? And I think also, too, having a shortened timeline, it really makes sure that the Boards have their ducks in a row.
I think, yeah.
So they're coming with a succinct plan, you know, and it has to move through that process.
And so, I, I mean, I wasn't, this was, this was created initially by the Personnel Board, right, Tim?
I, I did that for the Personnel Board, yeah.
And so, but I think that the, you know, not saying it has to be in there, maybe there's a different way we can address it. But I think that this was basically addressing the ConsCom clerk issue of, if, if it, if it has, you know, if it hasn't made it into the schedule by a certain time, it's too late for that fiscal year. You know, or, you know, because we're in this situation now, because it wasn't able to, to make it into the, the schedule.
Yeah.
But what exactly happened? I mean, the ConsCom thing's been going on for a couple of years now, right? So there was clearly some sort of miscommunication. Because they had, because they had all the information last year, right? It was basically the same request last year that...
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't added to the budget, right? FinCom declined to fund it.
Last year.
Even, yeah, a year ago, when Personnel first approved the request.
And we declined to fund it.
Yeah. It was pending, yeah, pending available budget, and the budget wasn't available.
They make a recommendation, we decide what's in there, and we decided not to put it in.
Right. But, but what I'm saying is, though, this year, there was really no change. I mean, they updated the job description, right, but that was more for the grade.
I think it went as a packet, and it didn't get before the Personnel Board.
Yeah, so, but that was, but that was because the Personnel Board...
They were asked to go through the process again, even though they'd been through it last year, and that's what they did.
Yeah, but the Personnel Board had issued a quorum, right?
Right, right, they did, yeah. They didn't finally act on it until, yeah.
But there's nothing to say it's not going to happen again, so...
Right.
What, what do we do? And I think what Tim was trying to do here was address that.
Yeah.
By saying, if it, if it doesn't make it in by a certain time, it's not going to be in. That kind of puts the fire under the Personnel Board.
Yeah, yeah.
And making it be longer than 30 days.
Yeah.
I think it was 30 days, because everything was starting on September 15th.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I guess, my question then is, what happens if the Personnel Board can't meet? What if we have the same sort of situation? It's not really, though, the Requesting Board's fault.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So...
On the other hand, even if everybody, even if the Personnel Board says, yeah, this is great, you know, that, they are not the approving authority.
Oh, yeah, right, no, I agree.
That's why I wanted to specifically say that, even if you get Personnel Board to say, okay, give you, give their blessing, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get it funded.
Right, and we're going to put that in here.
Okay.
It's, it's more of, it's more of what happens if the Personnel Board can't meet. That's, that's what we need to address.
Right.
Do we put something in here to address that? Or, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of unfair both ways, right? I mean, it's unfair, it's unfair to the people requesting the person, the, the hours, if they just don't know and just don't know, and then at the end, they don't get it, right?
Right.
But it's, and it's also unfair, you know, to FinCom and us, to just have this thing that's still out there. Yet Personnel Board has a lot going on, and they don't have people to be able to hit a quorum.
Right.
And we tried to change the size of the Board, right? And they decided they didn't do that.
Well, I went the wrong direction.
Well, still five-member Board, they have four members now. So, we did change the composition of the Board, now that I believe that members of other Boards can now be a member of the Personnel Board if they so choose.
Oh, yeah.
That was a change of town meeting last year, yeah.
Didn't want to be the...
Right, but, but we didn't, we, you know, because we had thought about making it only three people, so they wouldn't run into this problem.
Right, and they thought, keep it a five, but they need another member, yeah.
And, well, and then the other idea is, we could make our Personnel Director an official member of the Board.
Well, but I think, yeah.
We don't look overly...
Well, that's another discussion.
That's the discussion about the Facilities Committee. I think that's also going to come up there. It's really difficult to have an employee be a voting member of a Board.
Well...
So, let's, 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 doesn't solve the problem with the Personnel Board, though, right? So, do we want to address what might happen if the Personnel Board can't, you know, do we want to address what happens if people don't hit the schedule? And I think that's what Tim was trying to do with this draft. We can strike it, in which case it's still, you know, we could run into the same problem we just had.
Yeah.
Or...
Well, you don't want it to be an automatic approval.
Right, right.
Right.
Can it, can it default back to the Board of Selectmen? I mean, ultimately, if the Personnel Board can't meet, right, can it just default to us?
Yes, do we have the authority, though? We, we wouldn't be able to do a grade change, right? But we could do hours, right?
I think we could do those sorts of things.
Can we do hours?
Maybe. Well, maybe it could default back to Personnel Administrator. If the Personnel Board cannot meet, or does not meet, that the Personnel Administrator can make the decision.
Make the recommendation.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could put some language in to that effect. Because there was about a year and a half when we didn't have a Personnel Board, they were in California, or wherever. Things had to move forward, yeah.
Yeah.
Nathan?
Yep.
I hope we never have to have another meeting like the one we just had with Sylvia and Angie. I think, there are a couple of things here. One is, the Personnel Board used to focus on issues of level and that sort of thing, and not on hours. And it, it seems like combining hours with them, which just gives them additional burden that they're really not in any better position to deal with than, they're not in a position to deal with. It gives them something that they really aren't prepared to deal with, but whereas they are prepared to deal with, level and description and, and all of those things. I think that if, if we were able to just say to FinCom, here's the, here's where we agree on the budget, give Department X their budget, and let Department X's manager manage to that budget relative to the hours question. There's your budget, this is what you're going to have, you figure out how you're going to staff your function optimally, and that's, that's your responsibility to do as a manager. I mean, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't have a meeting like the one we just had, where we're trying to manage, you know, the ConsCom, I mean, in, in some respects, it's just, it's a waste of our time, it's a waste of their time. The managers of these departments should be able to manage to their budget, and, and the budget should be a reasonable one based on our, you know, our capabilities.
Right, but that, that presumes, that presumes that there's an increase in the budget, though, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, if it's warranted, I mean, if, if there's, you know, we have a cost of living that we're going to have to deal with no matter what. So, there is, every, every department's going to get some cost of living increase.
Right, so where do they get the money to manage whether or not there's more hours or a grade change?
Well, I think, they, they still have to, when, when the, when FinCom gives them their guideline, they still have to come back and say, we need, we need some relief, and we can, we have the data to support why we need it, and have that meeting, as they do with, with, FinCom meets with each of those departments, they can have that discussion.
Yeah, but, isn't that, isn't that the process we're going through right now? I mean, it's, it's not FinCom's decision whether or not they're getting that extra money or not, right? They're, they're just making a recommendation. Ultimately, we have to decide what goes in the warrant article. So, we have to know that, we have to know that it's, it's additional hours or a grade change that, that we support going into that budget. Right? Because, I mean, I think in the end, that the balanced budget at the end is our responsibility, not FinCom's.
Yeah, no, you're right, absolutely right.
And grade change and hours are too independent.
Yes.
They, they are, and, and...
They should not be, they should not be conflated with each other.
And I was, yeah, I was, I was, you know, I mean, in, in the last meeting, when we went through this, and, you know, Vanessa was here. Initially, when we were talking about this process, it was just grade change and, you know, and position, but, but hours were something that I had believed that they, you know, you know, they didn't do. They didn't look for workload and things like, and, you know, the, the requirement for that person to be there. But what Vanessa was saying last, you know, two weeks ago, was that they actually do do that. Is that, is that right?
That, that's accurate, yeah.
Yeah, so they, so they are now looking to see if it's a legitimate, if it's a legitimate request for the number of hours.
But maybe they could opine on job descriptions and levels and grades and so forth, and maybe the Personnel Administrator, who's closer to the staff, and, and could make the recommendations regarding hours, maybe this way they can't bifurcate it, yeah.
That would be a good idea. That, that way they don't get conflated.
Right, because they're not in a good position to know...
Yeah.
Really, what the day-to-day is like.
Yeah.
Okay, so is everybody okay if I take back Kate's changes in switching some of this to, you know, fall back on Personnel Administrator and the hours, and take another stab at this and give it to Tim?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I just have one other, one other thing, and that's where you were talking about, even if you can afford it this year, you know, we might not, you know, fund it or approve it.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. And I think that's really important for us to kind of remember, and I don't, I didn't really pay attention to that, but...
I can make that a little bit clearer.
Yeah, I don't know.
But it's, you know, it's really to get to the, you know, you, you can't just increase somebody's hours because you happen to have the money now.
Right.
You know, it's like...
You still have to, yes, okay.
It's, you know, you are as, as, you know, it's almost exact opposite, Carrie, as to what you were just saying, is, you know, they, they are managing their budget, but they can't, they can't adjust a person's hours or anything based upon the fact that they have the money without going to Tim.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so, but that's...
Because then, because then we own it, right?
Exactly, unless it were, it, I think we should have, though, some flexibility to be able to say that for, from maybe, you know, this month to that month, you can have those extra hours for your department, because you need it then, or, and, but that should be Tim's determine, and, it's not that they can do it willy-nilly, they still need to get permission from somebody, but it's not going to go to the Personnel Board, it doesn't necessarily have to come to us. And if they have the money in their budget, I don't see why we couldn't authorize...
So the last sentence says, "Request for additional hours due to emergency or temporary need are not subject to this procedure and will be handled separately." I could just add into the end of that through the Personnel Administrator.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, then I'd be happy. Happier. I'm never happy. That was good, that was good work.
I don't, I don't see Drew yet.
All right, so, okay, it's almost 8:30. Let's discuss the Municipal Fields, Facilities Committee, and then we can jump into the warrants. Do you want to take it?
On the, the Facilities Committee, a number of weeks ago, through Kate, who's the Board's representative on the Facilities Committee, there was a, a desire to make both facilities managers at the school and the town official members, voting members of those...
Non-ex officio.
Committees.
Non-voting.
Non-voting.
Ex officio, ex officio, non-voting.
Oh, okay. And, so there's a, a draft markup of, of the, the charge of the committee there. In between meetings, I did have the opportunity to discuss it with Town Council, who, who felt that while there was no, no real conflict in legal sense, that it wasn't necessarily best practice for towns to make employees members of, of Committees, that could create a certain awkwardness or put employees in difficult positions if they're, they're on, serving on Boards, Committees with maybe members of their own Appointing Authority or other, members of other, other Committees, so they might be reluctant to express their opinion if their, their boss, so to speak, is also a member of that Committee. So, it, kind of a cautionary note from Town Council, that, you know, it's, it might not be the best idea in the world, but there's no prohibition to doing that. I do think that we did add the School Facilities Manager some time ago, as an ex officio member of the Facilities Committee, and there's a, I guess, a desire to add Steve Bastak, the Town Facilities Manager.
Yeah, Jerry Lerman, the Chair of the Committee's here, I don't know if you want to include him in the conversation.
... don't count toward a quorum, and don't have voting, and I, I don't really see what the problem is. It kind of formalizes the relationship to the committee.
Oh, Jerry.
They can't hear you, so they have to come up to the microphone.
Our, our goal was to kind of formalize the relationship to the committee of both the facilities managers, and make it more formal, that the expectation would be for them to be at meetings. If they're ex officio members and they don't get to vote, and they don't count toward a quorum, I don't really see how that creates a conflict. Steve has been at all of our meetings since he's been hired, and an important part is his reporting on his activities and getting some guidance from the committee on what kinds of things he ought to be doing.
Maybe a change in terminology to advisory, non-voting, rather than ex officio?
Well, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the definition of ex officio is, but if...
It just means non-voting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a expert.
Wayne. I just want to, hold on just one second. Guys, there's just a lot of side talk going on, I'm really trying to drive this forward, so.
Wayne Davis speaking, not in any particular capacity, but just because I actually had to research the whole ex officio thing that you've been saying a few months ago. It means whatever you define it to mean. Some people think it means with vote, some people think it means without vote, so you're best off just saying in plain English, if you mean an advisory member without a vote, then say it that way. Or an observer, just say it in plain English, forget the Latin.
I would settle for a non-voting member of the committee.
So, when, when does the committee meet?
Every Monday morning at eight o'clock.
Okay, so it's, because, I don't know about the School Facilities, but are both of these employees hourly? Right, so-
The town, I don't know, the school.
I don't know either.
I don't know if he's salaried or not.
Our meeting, our meeting time of eight o'clock was purposely chosen to make it easy for both of them to attend.
Yeah, so that's the thing, it's not any sort of burden on them to come to these meetings, not like they're at night, but also too, it's not like it's interrupting their day per se, right?
I believe so, but it is the case that Rob, the School Facilities Manager, occasionally will send an email saying, "I'm sorry, I can't make it, I have an emergency to deal with."
Yeah, I think the thing, the idea also was to encourage, in fact, the, the staff to give more advice, because I think, well, they're, they're both kind of new to the town, and they don't, you know, they're still feeling their way, and we were trying to assure them that we are looking for their advice and input.
And they, they are the people that are in the trenches.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern was just that, you know, I mean, what's the new guy's name?
Steve.
Steve, yeah, you know, if he's only here for 18 hours a week and he's in four hours worth of meetings, you know, I don't know how long the meeting goes.
Our meetings are an hour or two.
Yeah, so I think, I think, you know, I had brought this up to Tim, and I think that I had misinterpreted what ex officio means, and maybe, maybe I didn't go, you know, maybe I went to the same thing Wayne went to, and it could have meant anything. But, you know, what I, what I was concerned about was having a town employee on a board or a committee as a voting member, because that seemed to smack directly in conflict with that online course that we take where you cannot be a public, you know, and so it was just screaming to me as being a conflict of interest. I, you know, I don't, you know, and I realize that there are some where it's actually your job to be on that board, you know, like, you know, Tim, you're, well, actually, you're a non-voting member of the Personnel Board.
I'm not, yeah, not, not a member at all, really, but yeah.
Yeah.
I'm the Personnel Administrator.
Potato chips.
So, you know, I guess, I'm fine with this if it says non-voting members of the committee.
So, we'd be expanding the committee by two members to provide for the, the non-voting slot. It's a five-member committee by-
Let's, I think we should say consisting of five interested and qualified people whom shall be appointed, plus two ex officio members, just to make sure that they're not part of the quorum.
Yes, well, that's-
If you call it a seven-member board, then you have to have five for a quorum, right?
Yeah, no, it should be a five, yes, it is a five.
Okay, so-
All right, five, five a point, yeah, okay, we can rework that.
Back to five.
It makes it clear that they're, they're non-voting.
It's kind of like we have lots of boards where there are alternates, right?
Yeah.
That don't, that don't vote.
Right, exactly, so these are, these are the same thing, sort of, except for associates really don't have to show up, and we really want these people to show up.
Yes.
So, they're non-voting members, but they don't constitute the board.
Exactly, that was what we were trying to say with this, to tell you the truth.
All right.
Okay. All right.
Take that back and-
All right. Thank you.
Work on that. The Finance Committee is not here tonight because they don't yet have a recommended budget. They do, however, need this board to officially vote to recommend a COLA. They've, they've, they've already modeled the budget based on the recommended COLA, but they, they do want an official vote.
What is this?
And I gave-
We have, oh, here it is, I got it.
I gave you a handout that went to the Personnel Board that they use in making their recommendation of a 2% cost of living adjustment in that. In fact, it's what they modeled for the budget, but somehow we missed doing that last time, I don't know how that slipped the-
Yeah, that was a big, yes.
So, not just yet.
So, the recommendation was based on-
It's not accurate, is it? Yeah, no, I mean, so, is 3A accurate, Kate and Alan? And what is their recommendation?
3A is not accurate.
That is totally inaccurate.
Yes.
It's two.
Unfortunately, this is out there now. And what is their recommendation?
Two.
It's a 2% recommendation based upon a survey of 30 other communities, and actually the second, the second sheet of that handout-
I looked through this over and over and over again, and I could not find where the recommendation was. What, what page is recommendation on?
Well, that, that was their vote, they didn't-
Okay.
... minutes, it's not-
Okay, so you just don't know because you're on the committee?
I'm not.
Oh, because you, because you go to FinCom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just looking through it, I'm like, I don't see 2% recommendation.
FinCom has been doing all their calculations on the basis of a two, assumed recommendation of two.
So, 80% of the 30 community surveyed are at 2% exactly. The second page is the historical COLAs that have been voted by the board since, going back to the late 90s, but you can see it's been 2% the last, the last three years, and approximately, five-year average is 2.05% for what it's been historically here in Carlisle. So, that's what they base their recommendation of two upon, this data.
Okay, so, but what I'm seeing here says that other communities are 2.1?
The average, yeah.
Average.
Well, that's what they said last year too, and we, we voted a 2%.
I know, but, but, Tim, you just said that it's, they're 80, oh, so 80% of them are at two? So, then the 20% is significantly higher, so that that's what brings it up to 2.1?
Right, there are a few that are the 2.5 to 3% range, there are maybe four or five communities in that.
And has the Personnel Board said anything about this?
That that's their, their recommendation to you is, is 2% for fiscal 20. So, they generate a recommendation to this selectmen, and then you communicate that to the Finance Committee, which they model the budget on, which they've done, but they're, anticipating a formal vote.
I thought this was all from FinCom.
Yeah, no, it's, no.
Just, just an FYI, I looked at Athol, Sherburne, Littleton, Harvard, Lincoln, Carlisle, Groton as being sort of more like the other, and of those, the average is 2.17. Just as an FYI.
Okay.
The other thing, the other thing I looked at was, there's, doesn't seem to be any correlation at all between what we've done and what the Fed has done. In the case of over 25 years, 16 of those years, we were above the Fed's COLA. Two years we were equal to them, and seven years we were less than, and there just doesn't seem to be any, any meaningful correlation with what the Fed does with our decisions.
Yep. In fact, over-
And I don't know, I don't know if Jen had a chance to distribute a email that I sent regarding where we're gonna be from a growth standpoint?
Yeah, I think we had that on the table.
I'm not suggesting that since we only have $100 and some thousand of new growth that we limit our COLA to $100 and some thousand, but maybe we can index it somehow to, to our, our growth. Index our COLA to our growth, meaning that maybe $100,000 is equal to, if we're at $100,000 in growth, that suggests a 2% COLA. If we're at 100, if we're at $200,000, that might suggest some other percentage of COLA. You know, we could, we might be able to index and have some rationale for doing this rather than throwing darts at it, you know?
Well, if COLA really means cost of living, there's data to support that, it has nothing to do with growth in the town.
We have an affordability issue.
But it costs to live.
There have been years when the government has offered 3.5, 3.6, 5.4% COLA increases. I mean, we didn't, we didn't pay any mind to that, so cost of living-
But interestingly, on average, we're still higher, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there's years where we're significantly under, but on average, we're higher.
You know, last, in a couple of years, the Feds did nothing.
So, I mean, one thing, you know, sorry, I was totally confused as to where this was coming from and everything, I mean, so we don't actually have an official recommendation from them, right?
They, they voted the recommendation.
There.
Oh.
Where do we have an official?
Written, okay.
No, right.
Normally, we do get-
Yes.
A piece of paper that says, you know, nearby-
So, you know, we'll go ahead and vote on this now, but-
I think Vanessa was here at the last, you know, we didn't, we didn't get to it that night, but she was gonna communicate that.
Could ask them to put the recommendation in writing, so that we actually have an official documented recommendation.
We would like to have all their recommendations.
And also, I think this, I'd like them to take a look, another look at 3A. I think we need to get this document corrected.
Yeah, they probably based it on the last contract, because, see, they've got it as a range, so they probably didn't know where things stood. Because I think-
No, it's the range between dispatchers and police.
I mean, and where did that, they get that information that we didn't?
No, the last contract, I believe that was-
Yeah, no, it says tentative agreement for 20 to 22.
Right, that's, yep, that's accurate, because there is a tentative agreement.
It is a tentative agreement.
Yeah, no, that's a 19, the number is, 2.9.
But I think that's where they got it from.
But the percentage number attached to it is incorrect. The COLA is not what they have-
Okay, so I just want to say, I'm gonna ask Tim, if, Tim, if you could just ask them to correct this, and to give us a written recommendation as to what it should be.
Sure.
We're gonna go off the verbal-
Okay.
-tonight. But just for our records, I'd like to have a written recommendation.
And to be clear, the, the elements of a contract include more than COLA. COLA is one specific component of the contract.
The contract costs more, but the COLA in it is not this number.
This is specifically the COLA.
I think it's just to compare to what the union agreements are in town.
But that's not COLA.
But, yeah, Tim, this says, we're trying to get numbers for COLA on this document, and this number that they've listed for the police is not the COLA number. It may be the, the number for the total contract, but it's not the number for the COLA for, for the three years.
No, that's, that's the number for fiscal 19.
Right. Yeah, that's the last-
2.9 is fiscal 19.
Okay, so then that's incorrect then, it's not the tentative agreement then, it's maybe what was negotiated for fiscal 19, but that is not the tentative agreement, so we gotta get that correct, we still have to get it corrected.
Okay, so I'm just gonna bring this back, because I think we're still at the same spot we were when I first made my statement.
Yes.
This needs to be corrected, because this is for next year, it needs to say 2.0, and if we could just have a written, a written recommendation from them.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I move-
Okay, any, any other discussion on this?
I move we adopt a COLA of 2% for fiscal 29, 2020.
Second.
For Carlisle's non-union, what is it? Tim?
Non, non bargaining.
With the-
Non-unionized employees in the operating budget for fiscal 2020.
That's what I said, yeah.
That's what Alan said.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Kate Carey?
Kissing your eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Great, thank you.
Drew, sir.
Yeah. Do we stick on, do we make Drew suffer through this? Because-
Yeah, we could make him stay until 2:00 in the morning.
Go by himself.
All right. 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, here.
Do you want to use your slide stroke that you emailed?
Did you send them around or not? I can put them up if you, if you want.
We can, we can project them if you like.
Look, do we have them here?
No, he sent them this afternoon, but we can see them if-
They can see, do they have copies?
Don't have copies.
Then I guess we have to project them.
Okay.
I can get started while you set that up. So, as you know, I'm the Chair of the Recreation Committee, which is, I'm an appointee of you.
Thank you.
And one of the things that we're charged with is the maintenance and overseeing the use of Spalding Field, in addition to Banta Davis. The, so I've inherited a lot of issues at Spalding, and the first slide, when we get it up here, is all about these issues. We have frequent sinkholes appearing in Spalding Field. We have pooling of surface water and grading problems, all indicating problems with drainage, you know, undersurface drainage, but also the, the grade of the, of the fields. The sun coverage is poor there because of overgrowth in the forest, which has weakened the grass considerably. We have a problem with animal waste from geese coming from the wetlands, which is a significant problem. We have problems with the way the fields are configured, one of those problems is its interaction with the wetlands. So, for its use as a baseball or softball field, foul balls go flying into the wetlands, which is neither good for the wetlands nor for the, for children who have to go digging into there to go get them. The solar orientation of the fields is, is inappropriate for most of them, so the way that a batter faces the sun is important in the, in the games of baseball and softball, and that is all wrong with what we have. We also have configuration issues there, which are safety problems. The field's proximity to each other is too close, and we need to reconfigure those fields, because right now you cannot use two of them at once. We have the, after many years, I wasn't here even in town when this place was, when the Spalding Field was built or renovated, but the hardscape is degraded, and the backstops and benches and so forth are rusted out and useless. So, as a result of all that, the field gets very limited use. So, there are three fields that are baseball, softball fields there, one softball field, a little league field, and a 90-foot, you know, professional length diamond. None of them are scheduled for use by either the recreation or middle school this, this year. This will be the first year that they get no use at all because of their condition.
Where do they go? Banta?
They will go to Banta or to Concord.
Okay.
The, so we need to propose a renovation, our committee, for the fields, and that renovation may come with a reconfiguration and repurposing of those fields, but we need an engineering study to help us with that. We can't even make a proposal now, and I wouldn't want to bring to you a proposal, which might be, you know, a half a million dollars or something, or even more, if we get to the issue of artificial turf, without professional advice about the feasibility and appropriateness of those kinds of construction plans. Some history about the site, so there's an oral history in town among much older residents that the site was once a landfill. I have not, I have not found any direct evidence of that, so people say that it goes way, well beyond, below, before the 60s. If anybody knows anything about its use as a-
I'd also heard it was.
Yeah.
Right.
So, but we, the other piece of history is that it portions- So, but we, uh, the, um, other piece of history is that it, portions of it, I don't know which, are, uh, leaching fields for the sept, for the subject system, I think from the school. Um, so we need, um, we need an engineer to, you know, discover and spec all of it.
I thought the leaching fields went through the waste treatment facility.
Yeah, this is what David Flannery has said. Uh, you want to flip the slide?
Sure. Yep.
Yeah.
I only have one, I only have one good picture for you now. I can get more, but these are sinkholes that I, I took pictures of, uh, yesterday morning. You can see, they're pretty substantial. It's a big issue, and this is just a couple. I mean, these are the biggest ones. You, they're just, they're all over the place, and they appear frequently. We fill them. Uh, you know, we lose our, um, hydration, um, to them. Sometimes our, uh, our sprinkler system just will literally fall into a, you know, the sprinkler head will fall into a, a sinkhole and be buried. Um, so, uh, so with this, I have a proposal, uh, and, uh, if you flip to the next slide, which is the language, I hope that the, the selectmen seen this language at this point?
It's in the warrant.
It's in the warrant, okay.
Yes, the draft warrant.
So, uh, I drafted this myself. Uh, I did not have, uh, the use of town council for this. I mean, I probably could have, but I didn't think I needed it. So, any advice you have about the language would be helpful. Um, and I'll just read it quickly. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for an architectural and engineering study of Spalding Field for the purpose of planning future recreational use by the school and the town. The study would conduct soil cores and test pits to test issues related to drainage, architect an undersurface drainage system, assess the risk of finding hazardous materials left from prior use of the site, scope any needs for variances or other permitting issues related to new field construction, make recommendations related to field configuration, solar orientation, use and maintenance plans, make recommendations for tree and foliage setbacks for solar coverage, recommend variations of gray class or other materials, and assess the suitability of the site or some portion thereof for artificial turf. So, there are two pieces, uh, on this slide that I'll get to quickly. The first is the, um, the first sentence, the twenty thousand dollars to be expended by you, the Board of Selectmen. Uh, so we are, you know, appointees of you and serve at, at your pleasure, uh, and we would expect to oversee this. When I presented this language to the school committee, they had a question about whether it should be under the school committee. Um, I don't have any dog in that fight. I assume I would be doing the work in either way, either way, but, uh, I could use, um, some advice as to what the appropriate governance, uh, for such a matter is.
Yeah, well, I think they control the field, right? So, even though we're giving you the money, technically it's there. So, I would think that we would need to get their approval before you did this study.
Wouldn't just be their.
Or change the warrant article? Or change Board of Selectmen to school committee.
Yeah, if they're, yeah, if they're okay with it.
Yeah, we can talk to them about that.
So.
But it wouldn't be expended. I, well, would it be expended? I guess it would be expended by the school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is one of you a liaison to the school committee that can, you can?
Yeah, I can.
All right, so that you, me, and David can figure this out?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll reach out to you for that. The other thing is that last sentence, which is a little bit of a bombshell. Uh, so, uh, you know, we feel, you know, the town narrowly defeated, uh, on a two-thirds measure, I think it was in two thousand and four or five, uh, putting artificial turf into the system. So, in other words, at that time, a majority of residents wanted artificial turf. Uh, we would like to consider proposing that again somewhere in the system, either here or Banta. Uh, I can say a little bit about why. Uh, having even just a single field of artificial turf within the field system saves us so much in terms of maintenance and wear and tear, because the fields get their greatest damage during the early season. And if you can get teams to rotate through an artificial turf piece during that time, uh, you save the field so much maintenance. It also allows us to do applications, uh, for pest control and for fertilizing and, uh, you know, and protect the fields during times of heavy rain, uh, and would go a long way to improving all of our fields if we had just one. Uh, everyone I have spoken to, uh, who, uh, you know, works, uh, either with kids or adults on, um, sports issues is very enthusiastic about this, uh, about the idea of putting an artificial turf field here. Uh, so, uh, so we would like to study the feasibility of putting an artificial turf field into the system, but we also think that Spalding is an excellent location for that, because its proximity to the school means it would get used during the morning in the day. The, um, athletic director there would make good use of it for more than just, you know, the post-school hours, whereas if it were at Banta, it would be a longer hike.
Would there be, I mean, but there would be much more use? I'm, I'm just thinking about parking at Spalding is much worse than parking at Banta, right? Because you're backing into that road and.
It's a good question. I don't, uh, I think there's a lot, there's plenty of spots there, right? I mean.
Yeah, during soccer season, it's always pretty packed, you know? People park on the other side. I mean, I think it, people are just used to it now.
They'll park at the school.
They'll park at the school.
Parking at the school or walk, or you could give up a little bit of the field for a little more parking, too. Um, I mean, right now, we have three-fourths of it that never gets used. Think about it that way. We've probably got some space to spare.
Is there some basis for the twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, uh, so I've, uh, so I, you know, my experience in this is having done, um, played a large role in the, in the renovation at the Concord Athletic Facility, using the Concord Carlisle Athletic Campus. Uh, and so we've worked with a few different firms and have a sense of the price range. And in fact, I spoke to one firm about this number specifically, uh, firm in Groton called Pine and Swallow, but we would obviously put it out to bid. Um, I think that with that amount of money, uh, if somebody, you know, if, if, uh, we would be able to scale the study to, uh, at least get done what we need to get done. The, um, there's one more slide I just want to kind of go over. So, this is just the, um, you know, what we would, uh, hope to achieve if, with a, with an engineering study. So, we would get advice about the configuration. Um, when we go to reconfigure that, it's also, it's always a little bit political, actually. You know, the baseball and softball people will argue for their fields, and the soccer and lacrosse people will argue for their fields. And actually, it would be nice if we had, um, you know, if this was just based on advice, well, how, how that, what's the best and highest use given the conditions, the undersurface and sun and so forth. Um, so, uh, to perhaps, you know, uh, put a, put a kibosh on all the politicizing of, of such a thing. Uh, they would advise us on the drainage issues, as I said, and also just any potential difficulties for field construction that we might have. So, the landfill issue, the leach field issue, um, setbacks to, um, wetlands, uh, and give us a feasibility, uh, read on whether or not that could be an artificial turf site. So, uh, the artificial turf, but also whether we can do the construction at all, um, given any undersurface issues or hazardous issues. Uh, and then also just, uh, advise us on how to, you know, best maintain the site, um, as well as, uh, think about how to keep the geese out, which is kind of a really gross problem. So.
Coyotes.
Coyotes. Coyote statues.
So, um, uh, I guess the thing that, you know, maybe it's an elephant in the room, but, you know, if we do this study and it's found that, okay, there's a landfill there, what do we do? I mean, is it potential now we can no longer even use Spalding?
I, I think that it could be used for passive recreation under those circumstances, based on what they're dealing with at Concord. So, I think it could be used as it is now, and we would, you know, probably.
We wouldn't be able to put in that sprinkler system. We wouldn't be able to, you know.
Wouldn't be able to go digging deep.
Might not be able to deal with the sinkhole issues.
Probably add some material on the top and replant it and use it really just for fields, and then we would know what we have. I don't think, we would not be creating a superfund problem or something like that.
Yeah, we know.
So, no one has requested use at all this year?
So, we have, as I said, we have, uh, a ba, a softball field and two baseball fields, and, uh, the, uh, middle school is now going to Banta for their sports, uh, because of the condition of those fields, and, uh, the, um, Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball Softball League has not, does not plan to schedule them at all.
Does it, does that reflect the fact that there's less demand for some reason?
No, their numbers are up, actually. Uh, and they're very excited about the work that we just did, um, uh, at the Band, lower Banta across from the cemetery. We just did a, uh, new baseball field there. We renovated a baseball, existing baseball field, so it's a high-quality field. The Banta softball field is also a very high-quality field, and, um, so, yeah, if, if we build good fields, they get used.
So, we can officially use the baseball field, though?
Yeah, opening day, April, like April, like twenty-seventh or something.
Twenty-second.
Okay, uh, any other questions from anybody on the board before I? Okay, Wayne?
Wayne Davis, two things for you. First, um, in unofficial capacity, Wayne Davis, um, two things for you. In unofficial capacity, uh, there's no listing for that site on the state's official list of closed and inactive landfills. Doesn't say, that doesn't say there might not be other things that were buried there by some farmer at some point in Carlisle's history, but there was never a landfill.
It looks like it might have been a stump dump.
Who knows? Define things in the words.
That's where, when you usually get sinkholes.
Uh, and then the second thing, speaking as moderator, on the language in the proposed warrant article, it only says raise and appropriate, and the usual language that we put in warrant articles would be raise and appropriate, transfer from, uh, existing funds or non-funds, um, and then, or borrow under the applicable statutes, you know, maybe want to.
It may make sense just to bounce us by council. I mean, you know, you, you have access to them.
Sure. No, well, council's reviewed the entire warrant to date, so this, this article's been part of that for a few weeks, so they've, they've seen it.
This is, this is okay as is. It's just that the usual practice is to list in the board all Wayne potential.
Possibilities, right.
Wait, does the warrant go final?
Tonight.
Tonight?
As far as what's in and what's out, yeah.
Yeah, as far as what's in and what's out.
We, we got some time to, to work with the language, but as far as whether it's on the warrant or not, tonight is the night.
But the wording of what will be in the printed one is as of tonight, right? Because the wording of what's in the printed booklet.
Well, no, we still, we still have some time before it goes to the printer. But if you decide tonight that this is on the warrant, then there's a Spalding Field article on the warrant.
Okay.
We, we just have about.
No, the wording's not official yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Still has some time to change that. We could change that to school committee, if that was the decision.
Earlier this week, that you wanted it to go to the printers, like, tomorrow.
Well, that was, that was based on the FinCom having a budget this week. They're not going to have their budget totally, so it's going to be next week. It's going to be next week, yeah.
Okay.
Um, this one I add a little bit to, if you can, you know, so, um, I am one of the schedulers.
Just because you're not, we just need, you had to be near a mic somewhere.
Oh, sure.
That's just a mic.
I am one of the schedulers for the softball. Um, and what I like to say about it is the fact that, uh, a couple of years ago, the Gale study was done, and it showed deficiencies in the number of playing fields that we had then, and it showed it specifically that those playing fields were going to be, um, put through basically overuse, and now we're down three from that study, you know, at that time. So, we are, we, there's no lack of need for those fields. We really do need them. We're competing, softball and baseball actually complete compete for softball fields. Um, and it's, it, we're really short of fields in there. So, as a result, we end up going to Concord. And I think what we end up finding, I did a little study for this when we were talking about the community center, and what I found is that we do an undue amount of games in Concord now, because we don't have the fields here in Carlisle. So, I, I can't express how much I do support this. Um, and I really think that, you know, from the, the softball, baseball perspective, we need to do this, and we've been talking about it for years, and it's finally time.
In fairness to Carlisle, however, you know, we did make a big contribution to the high school campus in consideration of that issue.
Yes, definitely. And the other thing that I just want to say about, because I've talked to Margaret, and I've had somebody out at the field to look at it, because CCYB was going to think about trying to put something in to just redo the dirt on the field. And when the guy came out, he basically said, "Don't, don't waste your money, um, at this point in time. The whole field needs to be redone." So, that kind of reiterates to where, um, uh, where we're going with this. Um, and what the, the talk is from the school is not a landfill, but it was a dumping ground for landscaping materials. So, you know.
Cleaner at least, no landfill. One other question that you haven't asked, which may come up at town meeting, is why aren't we doing this out of the CPA and use of the artificial turf?
Yeah, the turf, yeah.
Can't use the, and then we would have to allocate a portion of it, you know, as just, that's more effort than it's worth.
The work we could do, as long as, I mean, the non-artificial turf work we could do.
Even the site preparation work.
Yeah.
It would just be the actual turf that we couldn't put down for it.
Okay, we can take that from Concord.
We could do some private fundraising, too. At Concord, we did this, we had two-thirds of private fundraising.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Put it back. Right, seven. So, moving on, um, where are we? We are on our eight-thirty, um, which is the finalizing the town meeting election warrants. Um, but we're already done with our nine to nine-fifteen, um, and our nine-forty to nine-fifty. Wayne, do you want to join us up here?
Well, we didn't do our nine-fifty yet.
Is this the same version of the warrant as you sent out earlier?
It is.
Okay. So, it doesn't have articles.
So, if we approve this tonight, it, so. What we're approving is what's in and the order, but not.
Not the final language.
Not the language, because we had a problem, when you and I were talking earlier, we were worried about having the budget in, you know, we want the budget not to be a handout.
No, we're going to wait until we go to final, so that'll be planned next week.
Okay, so.
So, we have some time to.
So, at what point do we?
Near final form, and then.
At what point would we be finalizing, you know, doing the approval of the, the language and, in particular, the budget? We can't, because you can't approve that tonight, right?
No, you can't approve the budget, uh, language. It could, uh, it could, it could be at the next meeting. It could be as late as April ninth. I think what we, what we need to do is to agree on the ballot questions. Am I correct, Mary?
Yes, that's correct.
The deadline for that is before April nine.
Yes, it's April fourth.
Okay. And those are. But the, the warrant itself, the strict legal requirement is that it's, for the annual town meeting, is that it's posted by a constable seven days before the meeting. So, you really have a little more time to.
Yeah, we don't want to kind of close, but.
Well, no, no.
We also need to be approving a budget that FinCom has approved.
Right.
Right?
Right now, you, you just agreed, then, you know, article, whatever is the budget article, and holding a place for the, the numbers.
Okay, um, so let's, can we jump to the, um, the ballot questions? I saw them in the online packet, but I'm not seeing them here.
Here, the, the rear of the packet, uh, right after the end of the warrant.
Got it. Oh, no, that's not it.
After the officers to be elected, yes.
Did you change that to two and three?
Got it, okay. Okay, so I guess we have, you know, we have to, I guess, I guess first decide, you know, do we, but, uh, do we support, but, um, the, uh, our share of the parking lot and the road, that's article.
I think it's thirty-four.
Yes. Actually, let's just go through this article by article rather than jumping around.
All right, the, uh, article one approves the consent agenda procedure by which we would then vote articles two through nine as a bundle. The one change to that lineup is that I was told today that Article Five is not necessary. The assessors don't need that, so Article Five could be taken out of the warrant, uh, this evening. So, there'd be one less article in the consent agenda, and we obviously renumber. But those are sort of the usual suspects for, uh, consent agenda, the annually, uh, annual recurring, non-controversial approvals of revolving funds and, uh, chapter.
That starts, that stops at Article Eight.
It, um.
The consent agenda goes through Article Eight.
I think, I think it, this year, we were proposing to put Article Nine, the PEG Access Fund, under that, uh, because that's become kind of a annual. Because that's become kind of a annual thing in it that has nothing controversial.
Makes sense. There's nothing, it is what it is.
Wayne suggested that last time.
Good idea.
Say it, wait just a minute.
Article 10 would be any budget transfers that are identified for the current fiscal year. I know that Priscilla and Bonnie are working on those. There'll be a list of transfers if necessary that could be.
And will we have most of those by, do you want to come on up too?
Yes, you'll have a list of those by next week. Priscilla and I are working on them now.
Okay.
Here, Bonnie, take this one.
Never mind.
Okay.
Yes, Priscilla and I are working on them now, but we will have a list. Some of them will be for like 111 F wages, a few other items, but they're nothing unusual. We haven't seen before.
Okay, great.
Article 11 is where the operating budget would be inserted. Right now, just the town's going to vote an operating budget for fiscal 2020, but this is where the FinCom recommended budget would go in the warrant.
All $100,000?
All.
Okay.
All right, Article 12 were some special appropriations that, these actually appeared in previous years. Some of the amounts have increased over last year for COA, for assessors and the various departments.
Okay, so before we move on to Article 13, because here's, we're getting into the meat of the thing, does anybody have any questions or concerns about Articles 1 through 12? Any changes in wording or anything? They've all gone through town council, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No more, yeah.
Wayne, you're, okay, all right.
Article 13 is funding for the town master plan, proposed by the planning board, $160,000 appropriation. Pete's here tonight, but I think he's presented to you previously on that.
Just, okay.
All right, moving on, Article 14, this is the proposed additional funding for the complete streets project. The element that wasn't funded by the state.
And this one I want to recommend a change in. And. So the change I would like to make is, just give me one second, my computer went to sleep. And Wayne, interested in your thoughts on this, but I would like to add in, where, after the quoted complete streets project and implementing crossway safety recommenda, recommendations such as those outlined in the Stamske and McNary Engineering. I just want to make sure that we're not, that the new engineering that, that is going to happen isn't restricted to what the Stamske and McNary Engineering already said. So it's, you know, they need to, I just want to make sure that they have flexibility to do something a little bit different if they need to, rather than having to fit in the Stamske and McNary Engineering.
Perfectly okay. Do you want to do it that way?
All right, and that's, this is what Tom had said, right?
Yes.
Yeah. My, my concern earlier this week, I think it was earlier this week, maybe last week, but my concern was just, you know, we're doing an engineering study, and we are requesting $50,000 to add to the work that we got the grant for. And so I don't, you know, I want to make sure that this new engineering study has the flexibility to do what is right based upon the overall project, rather than being limited. Okay.
Yeah, because also too, it's part of the request in the proposal, is this piece as well.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so. Okay, Article 15, this came up at the finance committee meeting last night. The recommendation was to withdraw it from the warrant. If you recall, originally, three years ago, there was a $75,000 request for technology, town technology projects. It was broken up into three successive years of funding it at $25,000 per year. So this actually is kind of a holdover from last, warrant last year, so this would actually be the fourth year of that three-year plan, so it's.
No.
It's not.
No, because the, the first year was $25,000. If you remember, it was go, it was going to be going up to a few hundred thousand dollars. The second year, it was cut to $25,000 because the board selectmen and FinCom didn't support the 75,000. But it's not just a, it wasn't just a three-year plan, right? How much money do we have left?
About $20,000 left, I think.
Okay, and I guess what didn't happen when we were putting this in was the, the technology committee was proposing that all new computer equipment purchases go through that committee. And that didn't happen, and that's why this number doesn't need to continue to grow. Is that right? Each department's still budgeting their own replacements?
Well, we're budgeting, budgeting that through long-term caps, because the computer technology upgrade, I'm sure it's not all through that.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not coming out of this, this article. In any event, the finance committee doesn't, doesn't support funding it this year.
Okay.
This is to be withdrawn.
Well, what does the IT committee think about that?
I don't think they.
They don't know it's being withdrawn, right?
Correct. They didn't submit it either. They weren't, they weren't aware of.
Okay. Well, we'll need to see it again next year, though.
Looks like you're seeing it in the next article.
Well.
Yeah, the technology, yes, technology replacements. I would say the long-term caps are interested in having more access to the IT committee too, for advice on some of these long-term cap technology requests.
Computer long-term caps, I've always wondered that.
Well, because years ago, they used to keep one or two.
I understand. Why does a three-year computer long-term cap?
Well, that's, that's actually part of the discussion the long-term caps committee has also had, so it's another, for another day, but.
Let's move on, let's move on.
The long-term caps project, we populated the chart, $372,000 recommended by the long-term caps for various departments. Article 17 is the list of projects recommended by the municipal facilities committee, much shorter list than last year, but still significant appropriation there.
Yeah, so. I, I guess I don't, you know, I mean, there was a quick discussion, or a quick, quick mention two weeks ago about $120,000 for a salt shed. Are we really going to do $120,000 for a salt shed? Is this year the year to do that? When we also want to do, I mean, if we look at the, if we look at the different priorities, I mean, is the salt shed as important as the police station? Yes, Jay. Come on up.
Two things about the salt shed. Number one, the existing salt, salt shed is deteriorating and in very bad shape. And the second thing is it's too small. Gary can't keep enough salt there to cover Carlisle's needs during severe winters. So the new salt shed will be 50% bigger, which will allow him to keep a lot more salt on hand, plus it will be sturdier and not falling down. Now, as to whether he can get by for another year with the existing salt shed, I think if you asked him, he probably would hem and haw since he tends to make do with whatever he's got. But I think it's, the building is in really bad condition.
It is, so, you know, if you, you drive around, and it just happened, I was on a highway recently, and you see the sand and salt sheds, and they're often like constructed of like cinder block bottoms with kind of like one of those.
That's exactly what we're looking at.
That's $120,000 for one of those? I am in the wrong business.
Does that $120 include the removal of the older?
DPW has graciously volunteered to take it down.
And not get hurt?
And not get hurt, hopefully.
And, and so the, the facilities committee is looking at changes to the site, right? And would this would just fit within that? It's going to be put in place where it doesn't need to be moved?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Now, there is another, there are a couple of other items on DPW that we could talk about.
Yeah, the trailer, which is wholly a great idea. If anybody's been in the DPW, they need a trailer.
Well, there, there are many issues with their existing personnel space. It's too small, it's not safe, it's not accessible. So, and one of the implications of a trailer is hooking it up to septic system. The existing septic system is in failure. So in order to put a trailer on that site, we need to put in a new septic system.
It's cheaper than like a house one. Okay, so, but the, so I'm just looking at the total, you know, it's, it's like 392,000, let's just call it $395,000, and then there's $865,000 for the police station for long-term, for municipal facilities. I'm not going to do any really, really quick math, but I think that's like 1.2 million dollars.
And your point is. Yeah, yeah.
Well.
That's my point. That we haven't, that we haven't spent in the how many years.
Some ways, you can, you can think of it as chickens coming home to roost. I mean, the town hasn't been spending adequate amounts of money maintaining its buildings for many years, and getting them back into good condition costs money.
Jerry?
Yes.
On the salt shed, we're doing solar, you know, car top or canopy solars for the parking lot. Is there a way that that can be extended and used partially to cover the salt area?
I, I don't think so. It's a curved roof structure.
Has anyone looked at that possibility?
We've looked at the possibility of putting solar panels on the roof of the existing DPW barn and had to give up on that idea because the existing roof can't support the additional weight without severe modifications that just make it economically.
I believe that's true, but on the salt shed side, is there, is there a way that that technology can be used to provide enough?
I, I really doubt it. The, the roof is a fabric material, and the bows that hold it up probably couldn't support the additional weight of solar panels, plus the additional complication that they're curved.
I'm not talking about solar panels. I'm talking about a 22-foot-high canopy panels, carport panels.
Over the salt shed?
Oh.
Over the, yeah, over the area.
I think what you're saying is instead of the salt shed, using the panels, is that right? You're thinking of doing it instead of the salt shed, that would be what would be protecting the salt?
Yeah.
You still need, you still need a roof structure underneath that, because that would let too much water in between the panels. They're not, they're not watertight.
Well, as, as originally envisioned, they're probably not, but is there a way to do that? I'm sure that this question and suggestion has come up before. I was just thinking it might be a possibility.
We, we have not.
On the capacity issue, I've never seen, you know, the salt uncovered. I mean, if he uses more than can be fit in the shed, it seems like he just gets more when it's depleted to a point where he can put more undercover. So, I mean, do we need to store everything we're ever going to need in a, whatever we build?
That's, that's the recommendation of.
Any other deliveries?
The, the recommendation of our DPW director is that he needs more storage space for salt and sand.
And also, at this point, this whole thing might be moot anyway, because we have other issues, but.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of issues at the DPW site, and we're engaged in a, in a full-scale survey of the site and looking at possibilities for citing other buildings in other places. But regardless of how that works out, we need a bigger salt shed somewhere. And the question is whether it would be in the spot where the existing salt shed is, or somewhere else on the site.
All right, so just, just for tonight, I think what we're, what we're talking about tonight is, is this Article 17 going to be in or not, right? Not, not the content of what's in here, so, you know, because I, I think I still have lots of questions about this particular one, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we move on to Article 18.
There's just one more point, though, and that is, I believe that FinCom wanted to remove some of these items and bar, put them in as borrowings so they're not really necessarily expended next year, next year's thing. So it's not really like we're adding that to the budget for next year.
They wanted to have the flexibility to be able to pull some of the things out for borrowing, or indicate in the article that they would be borrowing.
Would that be a different article, or would that be?
You could do it in the same article.
You know, I'll, I'll say, one of the things that I worry about is with this article, and you got these big ticket numbers in there, it may fail just because somebody doesn't want one thing in there, but I guess we'll just deal with that. But, so for now, I mean, there may be, there may be a line item in here, and it would just say a difference, a different type.
It would be for borrowing, which would require a two-thirds vote instead of a majority.
But does that require a different article?
If you don't separate them out in the entire vote, it would be subject to two-thirds. So the advantage of separating out the ones you want to borrow is that the other ones would all be part of a majority.
Okay.
Now, with, with regard to your questions, how would you like to address the questions that the selectmen have regarding, regarding the, this warrant article?
I don't know, Kate, you were suggesting just a second ago that there were much bigger issues also that we were going to need to address.
Eventually, there's going to be big issues at the DPW, bigger than the $120 salt shed, because the, the service garage.
So not something that impacts this?
No, no, it would just be.
I thought you were suggesting that.
No, no, what I'm saying is that, for instance, some of this money might be, it'll be used for the DPW, but not necessarily possibly for the salt shed, because if we put the salt into the garage, because the garage is no longer good for, for having people working in it, but it could be used for storing the salt, now we don't need a new salt shed, but we needed a garage. So it, it would be massaging the money around in the site.
I mean, the way this is written, doesn't it need to be for a salt shed?
No. The, the funding of the facilities warrant articles is specifically worded to last for three years and to be flexible. So money can be, can be spent to other things as necessary.
So we're saying that we're going to appropriate $392,610, and it may be on this?
It may be on this, that's right. That's what it was last time.
That's what, we voted last year, correct.
And we haven't yet expended the money on the, you know, fire department, because we were waiting for the chief, and then there were other things, you know. And, and then it's amazing, you think you know what you need, and then you put the spade in the ground, and now you need, you know, remediation on top of everything else. So that's why it has to be a little bit flexible, because you can't plan that.
It's kind of like in the old days when I used to work on my car, when I lifted up the hood to change the spark plugs, I find lots of other things that.
Right.
Needed attention as well.
One of the things that we made clear is, number one, I think, I think at one point we had said that there were going to be like reports on how we did compared to what was in the article. It'd be great to get that.
We have that.
But, but one of the things that we did say was that if there was something here, like, like, you know, basically, there's. But one of the things that we did say was that if there was something here, like, like, you know, basically, there's a guarantee that replacing the salt shed is not going to come into the budget next year.
Yes.
I think we can make that guarantee.
Yes.
Right, so I mean, it's it's if we don't spend the money on that, it's not we're spending it on something else and then we'll ask the town for the money again in the following year.
That's correct. That's that's the commitment.
And just briefly, since our new facilities director has come on board, we've made enormous progress on all of the items in last year's warrant article. I'm happy to report that he's doing a fabulous job and and great progress has been made in the month or two that he's been hired.
That's awesome, excellent, awesome. All right. Great, thank you. Should we move on to Article eighteen? Well, when are we gonna, when will we, I mean, if we vote, if we're voting on this now, how are we going to deal with the one article, two article thing? It's just going to be one article and it's two-thirds vote?
That would be up to your preference, but if it were me, I would probably reserve two articles with the contents to be filled with FinComs.
You don't have to do two articles because you could, I think, actually, see if Tim agrees with all this. I suppose you could make two sep, under one article. Having warned the voters what is is up, you could make two separate motions. I mean, it's the same as we do under CPA. You have one article, but sep, but separate votes.
Yeah. First, you buy the question to vote project as a.
I mean, that, I mean, that, well, that's also, it's the same procedure as, as I mentioned on the, for the parking lot and access road on the school. The article, two motions.
The trailer and septic cut it in half, in two halves, basically.
Okay. I I think it seems like we we can leave it at just one article and we can go either way. It could be, we make two motions if that's what we decide, or we can say it's all one and it's all. Right, yeah. So I'm comfortable with that. Is everybody else comfortable with that?
Yeah, especially since they're done on the basis of how they're going to be funded.
Okay, number eighteen.
Eighteen is to fund the fuel spill remediation at the fire station. We have plugged the number one hundred thousand in here. The latest information from the LSP is that the soil borings and groundwater testing is one hundred percent favorable to the town and he anticipates a greatly reduced remediation cost, but we don't know what that is yet, so I think I leave it in.
When do you think we'll know?
Probably within, certainly before town meeting, within the next couple of weeks, but he thinks it's going to be much less than the one hundred, but.
Like, good news?
Yeah, it is fantastic news, finally.
I'm not sure what to do with that. It'll be ninety-eight.
Yeah, right.
No, no.
Okay, all right, so Article nineteen.
Article nineteen is the police station renovation project that's being split off as its own project. It's written to be subject to a debt exclusion referendum that the board would have to vote also to put on the ballot this evening, so it's a two-part approval. Borrowing has to be approved at town meeting.
And the Municipal Facilities Committee will be doing the presentation on all, all of those three?
Yes.
Okay.
This warrant article will be a combination of the Facilities Committee, the Police Chief, and the Architect.
Okay. Article twenty.
Article twenty is the first of the planning board zoning. This is the bylaw that bans commercial marijuana sales. Pete was in a few weeks ago to talk about these articles, so the planning boards had their hearing. And they worked on this language with town council, so I think it reads as they wish it to read. Article twenty-one is the partial ban for cultivation and craft cooperatives. Bylaw. Article twenty-two, some cleanup to the bylaw that's necessary regarding medical marijuana. Definitions and changes that had to be made.
Article twenty-three, I didn't recall seeing before.
Which one?
Article twenty-three. The equipment tower lease, this is just to allow us to lease the tower to cell phone companies or something, or?
This is because the leases have to be, may have to enter into new leases at the Bedford Road Tower. At the Endo Reg and the Sorley Towers. There are new leases with the owners of those towers. The company's named SBA. So town council recommended this authorization so that the board can enter into those leases as part of the new communications.
Okay, and so, and town meeting has to approve whether or not?
Has to authorize the board to enter into the lease.
Okay.
You could, you just can't on your own, you know.
Okay.
Agreements and town meeting has to authorize that.
Does this include the one on Anaschnack Hill as well, the one in Concord?
No, this is specific to the the two existing towers, the so-called Endo Reg site on Bedford Road and the Sorley one on Westford.
Okay. So, but what happened to those, to the one and, what happened to those tow, those, the one, the one at Middlesex and the one in?
Those, those, still anticipated to be part of the communication network.
Yeah, but we don't have a lease on it?
We, we have an agreement to to locate on those.
Okay, but so.
There's an existing one on Anaschnack Hill the town has had for many years.
I was just wondering that if we.
There's an agreement on Middlesex, but these, these are leases because these are commercial towers.
I see, an agreement as opposed to a lease we have.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, these are not a new tower, these are existing towers.
Right, those are, yeah, they're new leases on the existing towers. Article twenty-four is where the CPA recommendations will.
Do you have any idea where that's going to be?
Be inserted.
Do you have any idea what those numbers are going to be?
So there are four of them. There's sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one for the town clerk. There's fifteen thousand for trails. Nine thousand for, it'll actually be administrative funds, but it's the open space and recreation plan. And then there's the Greeno Dam. We don't know that exact number yet. It went out for bid, right?
Yes.
So I got to talk with the council. We're going to leave that one blank for now. And and fill in the number once we actually have some bids back.
Okay, I thought that we were going to get a grant for Greeno Dam.
So, yeah, part of it is, I was going to do this during my liaison report, but I can do it now. Part of it is that it's this, there's a state fund for some of those things, but we don't know exactly when we would hear. So the idea is to, for CPA and, you know, possibly take a full year. You know, if we don't hear from the state, you know, or if we do hear from the state in that time, you know, then we can act on it. But if we don't hear from the state, you can actually go that full year. So we we did kick that around. We had our meeting last night. We kicked it around and said, well, why don't we just wait until next year? But it's that whole thing, if we hear and the state comes back and says, no, you know, you might as well just allocate it and run with it.
So are we going to be hearing from CPC?
That's me, I'm the chair.
I know.
Well, usually I do it during this sort of thing, but I can do it during a liaison report.
Okay, or just as a agenda item? That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, it's usually during this whole thing. I've been taken off. Nobody wants to hear from me anymore. It's usually during the the coordination meeting.
Okay, hey, we could get him on the next agenda. We'll have to hear him talk.
Article twenty-five is the zoning bylaw amendment regarding the residential open space community. Board has had that for a while. They've had their, and that. Then we get into succession of solar project-related articles. Article twenty-six would authorize the solar facility leases that the board of selectmen and the school committee would enter into with the vendor. Also provide for the pilot agreements for both of those locations. And necessary easements at the transfer station and CPS parking lot.
And when would the rest of these numbers be filled in?
Well, by the next time you meet, we can, we can fill in some of that, yeah.
Why is twenty-six before Article twenty-seven? Because if you don't do twenty-seven, do you do twenty-six?
Well, this, the order council put them in, but if there's a better order, we can.
I don't know, I'm just asking. Some of it's town land. Yeah, okay, I don't know. It's just because of the school committee.
If the underlying zoning's not changed, then there's no.
Yeah, then we can't do the other.
Actually, I don't think the solar, it does actually require the bylaw change, yeah.
Yeah, it does. Both of them, both of them require the bylaw change, in fact.
Flipping that.
Yeah, I, I.
Order there.
It came up last night at the planning board that it was recommended to flip the order so that we did the one that recorded the two-thirds vote first because if that one doesn't pass, the next one is moved.
Certainly do that.
Okay, yeah, let's swap those two, if you're okay with that way.
And then Article twenty-eight, the parking lot resurfacing at the school would not be moved in the event that the succeeding two articles don't have town meeting, but that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to resurface the parking lot of the school.
Twenty-nine is would have been withdrawn.
Right, you saw the memo from the committees, so twenty-nine is being withdrawn. Article thirty is the right to farm by law that the ag commission is, I'm sorry?
Say twenty-nine has been withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, we'll not, we'll not be on this warrant, correct.
So I guess, you know, now is, now is the time that we should talk about it. So this, this was withdrawn by Recycling Committee.
Household Recycling Committee.
Household Recycling Committee. With with a recommendation that I fully support and I hope that the rest of the board will support it and I think that we should, you know, move forward with incremental changes to improve recycling rates at, at the transfer station. You know, I think that gets to, you know, better signage. It gets to looking into how we can put some composting there. It gets into looking at the pricing or the viability of construction debris there. You know, should we start charging for larger items? Should we start, you know, enforcing permits more, maybe raise the permits? Lots of things that we're kind of short of doing the pay as you throw. And, you know, their recommendation was that we do that first and therefore they withdrew this. And I, I personally support what their recommendation is, that we should, we should look into those. I don't know.
No, I totally agree.
Terry?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
All right, Article thirty then is the proposed right to farm, farm general bylaw. The agricultural commission has been to talk to you about a couple of occasions. Article thirty-one, the town clerk brought this to the board's attention, accepting chapter one forty, section one thirty-nine to provide, provide essentially free dog licenses for residents over age seventy.
Now that I don't have a dog. You can always get one.
Article thirty-two, a general bylaw amendment from the planning board to add two rows to the list of scenic roads, Rockland Road and Stern Street. Article thirty-three is the funding for the Spaulding Field study that Drew presented a little while ago. Article thirty-four is the Concord bylaw regional school district capital project. So again, would be subject to a debt explosion. We did send a memo to the Regional School Committee asking if they would, if they were willing to divide the question at town meeting. I believe they're meeting this evening, but they were going to discuss that at their meeting tonight, so we'll see what, what comes from that request. So that's the Concord project. Article thirty-five would be the vote to dissolve the Carlisle Housing Authority. I imagine that the motion will.
I mean, is it as simple as this? I was just going to say, is it really as simple as this?
This is, this is, this is council's suggestion for the warrant language, but I think the motion will probably be more specific and more detailed, I think, but.
It gives, many of the articles in the warrant could be significantly shortened like this one. It's, you know, sort of about, the, the requirement is to let the voters know what's going to happen. And when warrants were posted by nailing them to, to trees, they weren't thirty pages long. So this pretty clearly says what your, what the proposal is, so I, I certainly don't have a problem with it. You know, so long, so long as whatever the motion is, is consistent with dissolving the housing authority, I think you're going to be fine.
Okay.
I have to reserve final judgment until I see the motion.
Article thirty-six would be to amend the general bylaws regarding the composition of the Community Preservation Committee to provide a slot for a member of the housing trust rather than the housing authority. Presuming that Article thirty-five passes, there would no longer be a housing authority going forward, so.
So we wouldn't move it?
It wouldn't be, it would, I guess it would not be moved to the housing authority. It's not allowed, correct?
You could still do it.
Oh, that's true. You could still do it. You're right.
Yeah, and you might even want to since we've moved everything over, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's, this one, there's actually, I don't think there's a necessary order. I mean, it's fine doing it, this order, you could flip the order. I'd still change it.
I'd keep it this order and move it no matter what.
The, in the ROSC, there's also some language about changing from housing authority to housing trust as well, and that comes way before this, so.
Okay.
All right, Article thirty-seven is the citizen petition regarding seeking an easement from the town for nitrogen loading credits. We understand that the, this will not be moved to town meeting?
That has been withdrawn.
Well, it'll still be on the warrant because it's a citizen's petition.
Oh, right, it's not going to be moved.
It won't be moved, right.
Just a question on that. Was it their assumption that the only way it would be feasible anyway to do something what they wanted to do is if they didn't have to pay us anything for the easement?
No, I think their, I think that their proposal actually was that they were, they were willing to pay for the easement. And, you know, whether, you know, in, in some format that, you know, to be worked out. I think that they were fully thinking that they would pay for it. I think, you know, I'm not going to speak for Eric, but I do know that, you know, somebody did raise a question around, well, you know, can we just do this? You know, can we just grant the easement and we actually can't, right? Wayne raised the question that, you know, other butters would have to be given the opportunity to do it.
Be competitive, yeah.
And I think they, I think, so I think they just chose, you know, to scale back.
They met with the board of health and the planning board and they have found a different way forward, I think, so.
Why is this mainly on the warrants?
Because it was the citizen's petition, so to remove it, the same folks who signed that petition would have to sign another one to take it off. So it's easier just to leave it on there and not, just not move it to town meeting.
I guess, you know, it's not really a risk, but I mean, I guess somebody could say, no, I want to move it, right?
Moderator quickly passes over.
Yeah.
And there's no motion under Article thirty-seven, moving right along.
And it has to stay in here exactly as written, right?
That's the language of the petition. And the same with the following citizen petition regarding amending the general bylaws firearms, explosives, and hunting.
Okay.
These are hunting still.
Now, do you understand that? Could you explain that that was my?
That you submitted a citizen petition and now it's in the warrant. You submitted a citizen petition, and now it's in the warrant. No, 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 that's, no, the previous one is actually not being withdrawn either, but it won't be acted upon at town meeting, but yours will definitely come up for debate.
Well, it's actually not gonna be Article 38, because we've taken other ones out.
We're gonna renumber.
It will be some number under 38.
It'll be 36, yeah. All right. Then we get to the election ballot, and there's some, I don't know if it's good news or bad, and I'll let the town clerk explain maybe what the situation is with the two. There will be two debt exclusion questions you will vote tonight, I presume, to put on the warrant. And then there are two referenda regarding the marijuana bylaws, and Mary, take it away, Mary, what has to happen there?
So our current issue is that the standard ballot is either eight and a half by 11, or eight and a half by 14, and Council is recommending that we add the entire summary and the bylaw. The bylaw itself is 12-point font, Times Roman, five pages long. So in order to have all that, I've been playing with a couple of different programs, I have actually sent out for a vendor to see if it can be typeset professionally, because we're torn between having all the text on the ballot and the ability to read it. So you don't want it so tiny that you can't, it's not, doesn't mean anything for it to be there, but you also have to be able to fit it inside the machine, so.
So wait, so your challenge is to fit a five-page document on an eight and a half by 14 paper?
No, we can go as big as 11 by 17 with creative folding.
Okay, 11 by 17?
Yep, so it's.
And it's a five-page document?
The, if you saw the text of the bylaw.
Yeah.
It's all that text.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at, plus all of the other offices and the debt exclusion questions, so.
Good luck.
Yeah.
When you say the machine, you mean the click, 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 click?
Yeah, click, click, click. So it basically has to be about the width of my palm when it's folded up, otherwise it doesn't fit in. So that is a space issue.
Is it gonna have hinges?
People to hold it up like this for you, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's the issue we have right now.
Don't forget, the Russians can't hack it.
This is true.
It's true.
I guess it depends on who's doing the cracking.
No, we have really good workers.
Okay.
Town election, is there a date for the town election?
It's the 7th of May.
But it's not printed on here.
It's actually, it's on the page before at the bottom, and in the name of the bylaw.
There it is, okay, sorry, 7th of May, okay.
Can I also add one thing? There will be an election for two library trustees, one of them is for a completed term, and that will be nominated on.
Actually, that's not what happened.
Doesn't have to be on this?
No, because what happened is that part did not get voted in time, there wasn't enough time to add it to the thing, so that's gonna have to be an appointment for the unexpired term.
So we have, we have a few suggested motions to approve the two debt exclusion questions. Those have to be approved by two-thirds vote, which is four out of five selectmen. In case you were wondering, you couldn't have a three to two vote on those.
So what happened, so, the way, so we sent, what if tonight this Regional School Committee decides to split them out?
We have to split these questions.
Well, I don't think it would affect the.
Does it not affect the ballot? I mean, what if it?
I don't think it would affect the ballot question, because that ballot question is the town share of the two projects. I mean, the.
But what if only?
What if only one of them passes?
And the share of the one that doesn't pass is zero.
Yeah, because it does say reconstruction of the access road and designating, designing and construction of a new parking lot. It might be two different.
Yeah.
Can you change it to and/or?
Yeah, I'll have that get to language.
Well, you're probably okay, because this says for improvements, including.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
So you're paying for the improvements, and it's not, it's not necessarily a totally comprehensive list.
But it, but it, wouldn't including mean that it was both of those?
You'd get bond counsel's opinion.
With the way that they've.
Probably okay.
They've been tightening things up over the last five years, so I'll just point out to them and have them.
I wouldn't be surprised if they do not wish to separate the two questions. That seems to be the way they're leaning, so we'll know that tomorrow.
This might be moot.
And if we vote against it, it doesn't happen?
Both towns have to approve.
Okay.
Right. Approve the town meeting, it's on the warrant, I mean, if the ballot question fails, you just don't have excluded debt, the town meeting would have still approved the debt, is that correct? Well, no, it's contingent on the question, yeah, it's contingent on the question, so it would fail.
Okay, so then we have, all right. There's a motion, let's go back to that.
There are a couple of motions on the questions, and then a clause in the warrant.
All right, I move that the board vote to include a question on the May 7th, 2019 town election ballot for a debt exclusion pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, Sub K, to consider excluding the debt service associated with the CCRSD access road reconstruction and new parking lot project, and to notify the town clerk in writing regarding this vote.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Move that the board vote to include a question on the May 7th, 2019 town election ballot for a debt exclusion pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, Sub K, to consider excluding the debt service associated with the police station renovations project, and to notify the town clerk in writing regarding this vote.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye. Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Okay.
Okay, approval of additional referendum questions.
The two referendum questions regarding the marijuana. It'd have to be added, we don't have the final language on those yet, because Mary's still working with town clerk, but I think a vote to add both of those questions would be in order. Language isn't as specific as the debt exclusion vote.
Move approval of adding question three and question four to the ballot? Is that pursuant to any, is that pursuant to any Mass General Law?
Not that, I'd like to get the debt exclusion, though, you can.
Yeah, okay.
Language to be determined by town council.
Yeah. Okay, and to notify the town clerk in writing regarding this vote?
Might as well, put it on the same memo, yeah. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Carrie?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye. Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
And lastly, I move that the board vote to close the warrants for the April 29th, 2019 annual town meeting, and the May 7th town election based on the draft warrants presented this evening, subject to final review by town council and the town administrator as to language and form.
Second.
Okay. I just wanna, I'm pretty sure this is the case, but I just want, you did both of the bylaw changes in your motion?
I did, question three and four.
Okay. All those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye. Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay, so we're at 9:15, we're 45 minutes late.
Could email it to Jane tomorrow.
Okay, we're gonna move on? Cable Advisory Committee. Excuse me, we're continuing on. So. Cable Advisory Committee. Let's see. We don't have the.
I didn't get any.
The sample. For the desk, huh, that he sent out. So I guess, you know, this is just, this is trying to get ahead of it. Our contract is due 2020.
October 20, 21.
2021, so it seems like a long way away. But it really isn't. And I think that, you know, we've had a lot of citizen feedback about the availability of cable on those roads that, you know, have long access roads, or that are private drives, which are excluded. That's just the way the contract is written right now. And so I, what I, what I wanted to do was to try to get this process going. Number one, first of all, to make sure that the public is notified that we are going to start this process of negotiating with Comcast, so hopefully some interested citizens who are impacted by this will engage in this committee that we need to put together. I do think that it's gonna need a leader from the Board of Selectmen. I'm not, you know, it may make sense for us to wait on that until after the elections, so that we know who all the board are going to be. And I talked about this with Tim, it's like, well, should I not even talk about this yet? But we decided, no, you know, I should bring it up, because we want to, we want to get the message out there that we're going to start working on this. Tim has already gotten a charter, you know, just a draft of what I think we used to have, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, so we need to figure out, what is the makeup gonna be, what is the charter gonna be, which I think can largely be the same as what it was before, and really get the message out.
Priscilla, are you hearing this, getting the message out, okay?
You know, that now, you know, now, you know, now is your time to.
Oh, okay, yeah, just checking, just wanted, making sure.
You know, now is your time to get engaged in Carlisle, and try to help us work through this contract to make sure that everybody's needs, you know, are met as well as possible. Again, it's not until October of 2021 that it's due, but only, it is a large corporation, and so these types of things, and we are a small town, and so these types of things take a long time to happen. We don't want to wait until the last minute, so I guess I would hope that, you know, after, you know, shortly after the election, we pick this up as a formal, let's really drive this forward.
That's an action item.
All right, so that's it for the Cable Advisory Committee. Assignment of rights to acknowledge, location, confirmation.
This is a document signed of members of the Housing Trust. This is the instrument by which the rights and obligations of the Housing Authority with respect to Benfield and Lot 1 at Benfield are being transferred to the Housing Trust, and the agreement requires also the Board of Selectmen's assent in making that assignment of rights, so you need to also approve that document as members of the Board of Selectmen, and also, and have signing it twice, actually, for most of you to.
Oh, I would like that.
I have the one original that I got from David Friedman last week, and he told me, do not lose this, so. I didn't.
You'd drive him crazy and not sign it.
Yeah.
Or just tell him you lost it.
That's, yeah, no, I forgot, David, yeah.
He's misplaced it, but.
He's probably watching.
Yeah, probably down here, yeah.
We'll get a couple minutes. Yeah. Yeah, he'll show up.
Yeah.
I'm just going down there.
So.
The long title, isn't it, Assignment of Rights to the Acknowledgement of Location and Confirmation.
That really seems to say nothing. It's a long title that says nothing.
So I move the board approve the assignment of rights and acknowledgement of location and confirmation of easement rights as outlined in the town council summary.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All righty, starting with you, Carrie.
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Okay.
I just also want to thank David for his hard work and his neat solutions to naughty problems and.
It's really incredible how much. Yeah, it's amazing, yeah.
Absolutely.
I don't know who else could have done it. Yeah, it's just Jesus, yeah, yeah. He's doing more not on committees than, well, I guess technically, no, he's not.
Okay, so we're all done with the town administrator's report? Are there any liaison reports?
I'll do the CPC next time.
Any other liaison reports?
Well, I think I heard most of what I had, I was at FinCom last night, and Facilities this morning, but I think you guys know what we're talking about, so.
Okay.
Do all these other things, so I don't have to tell you.
We had a couple of solar working group meetings, and they are in negotiation with Amoresco and working out all the details with legal counsel. Apparently, the only major thing that's been settled apparently is the school that decided not to go for upfront funding in the parking lot, to do it on a 20-year payment plan.
Okay. Anything else?
Tim, any further from Allison Saylor on the memorandum of agreement as to how we would work?
I exchanged emails with her this week. They're going to get back to us with, I guess, a list of their understandings of what the board was looking for, so we're gonna, we're gonna start with expectations and understanding of the responsibilities of each party, and from there craft an agreement. We don't have any such agreements with existing friends groups, this would be the first one, it might be a model of sorts we could use for other friends groups here in town.
So, and then when you get that MOU, will we see that?
Oh, yes, oh, certainly, yeah, certainly, yeah.
Nothing further.
So. Okay. Let's move on to minutes, then.
I move, we approve the minutes, let me look it up first. Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, as presented.
Yeah, the only thing is, is Bryon, is B R Y, yeah.
As amended.
Okay, approval of the minutes as amended.
Okay, all those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
I move approval of the minutes of Tuesday, February 26th, 2019.
All those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed Epstein, who wasn't there.
Brown, aye.
Last school, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Okay.
Remove approval of the minutes of Tuesday, oh, what, you did those? Never mind, never mind then, I had them in there twice.
Well, the rinse, repeat, huh? All right, there's a motion here to enter into collective bargaining.
Executive session.
This is just in case the clerk's office is closed.
Move that the board enter an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 2, to discuss strategy with respect to non-union police-fire chiefs negotiations, non-and-union, I guess, police and, oh, sorry, police-fire chiefs. negotiations, as an open meeting may be a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position, and that afterwards, the board will not return to open session.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
And so thank you very much, everybody, that concludes our open, our component of tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting.